Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. If there's any private party recording this hearing, please stand up and ask for permission. I'll introduce the board and the staff. On my far right is Mark Finner, a voting member. To his left is Scott Peterson. To my right is Frank Clerk, the Frank Clerk.
Frank.
Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name is Suzanne Murphy, the chair, and to my left is Tony Petucci, a voting member. On my next left is Noreen Stockman, the zoning administrator, and Ashley Demello on her left, the office assistant. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town's zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on any application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representatives will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but their time may be extended by the vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, next, the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal at hand. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait and be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please speak to the microphone, and it will amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. And we also have a time if anyone wants to speak up, just a public statement, nothing that's on tonight's agenda. If you have any kind of statement you want to make to the board, we're not going to comment on it, you're welcome to come up. Anybody have a public statement? So then we'll move on to our hearings. We have a continuation, 28 Whitecaps Drive. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, Madam Chair. So I am before you again, representing Yakov and Galina Ostrowski, the owners of 28 Whitecaps Drive, and they are seeking permission for the raise and rebuild of the existing nonconforming dwelling. We were previously before this board about a month ago, and there were some requested modifications to the plan, as well as some information relative to the required findings for a special permit within the Water Resource Protection District. So we submitted the revised plan, which is what's on the screen now, and those plans reduced the lot coverage by impervious surface to 18.7, which is below the 20% maximum allowed in the Water Resource Protection District. That was accomplished by replacing the paved driveway with crushed stone. We also submitted correspondence from Mike Borselli of Falmouth Engineering relative to the standards set forth in 247.7B-4E. That section states that the zoning board may grant a special permit for lot coverage in excess of 15%, provided the proposal does not adversely impact quality or quantity of available water, result in substantial disturbance of soils or drainage, and does not exceed max loading standard for nitrate/nitrogen impact. Mr. Borselli's letter notes that the quality of the water would not be impacted due to the installation of dry wells and the removal of paved surfaces and the drain in the driveway, as well as the additional natal plantings, which will be done to enhance the buffer to the pond. These are all known methods to reduce surface water runoff. He also noted that any disturbance here would be temporary in nature, only during the construction period with erosion control measures implemented, and all disturbed areas to be stabilized and planted. In addition, the drainage measures will improve the site conditions. As to nitrogen, he noted that the existing conditions exceed 5 part per million, but the proposal results in actually a minor decrease. Beyond that, this proposal is substantially in the same footprint as the existing structure, maintains the same number of bedrooms as existing. The existing nonconforming setback is marginally improved from 31 to 32 feet at the rear, to the water's edge there, unable to improve further due to the septic located in the front yard and front yard setback. Otherwise, this conforms to lot coverage requirements and setbacks. Proposed ridge height again is 28 feet, 4 and 3/4 inches. There's no new nonconformity created, and the home's designed to be in character with the neighborhood. This proposal has received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and as proposed, represents an improvement over the existing conditions. It improves the existing nonconformities, increases the usable space, and certainly spruces up that location. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe it meets all the requirements of 240-10.2A, 7.7B-4E, and 240-12.1E. I would be happy to address any questions. I believe we provided all the information that the board requested, and otherwise would ask that you grant the special permit.
Mark, you have any questions down there?
No, I don't have any problem with this. This is all sand there, and I think I should more than adequately handle it. But you mentioned it have a decrease in nitrogen. They're reusing the existing septic, so where would that, just out of curiosity, where would the decrease come from?
So I actually took that from Mike's letter, and what he said was, in fact, there's a minor decrease in nitrogen loading due to an increase in the roof area. The increase in roof area provides a minor decrease, a minor increase in dilution of the nitrogen load. Please don't ask me to explain how. I'm going to rely on the engineer's statement for that one.
I, like I said, I have no problem with this, but I don't know where that comes from. It doesn't make any sense to me, but that doesn't, I'm not an engineer, I just play one on TV, but.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I think we could have some fun banding that one around, right? Just more confirmatory, four bedrooms?
Yes.
Ridge heights at 28 feet, 4 and 3/4.
Correct.
Com-com had to remove a fire pit. Sorry to play small ball, but I just noticed.
We'll comply with any requirements of all the relevant boards.
And you mentioned that we would be back down to the 18.7.
Correct, by impervious surfaces, yeah.
Is there, going back to the septic system, is there capacity, or is there any reserved space for an IA there? I'm not seeing it here on the board.
I don't know the answer to that question, Mr. Peterson, because they're reusing the existing.
Yeah.
Given the layout and where the driveway is, I suppose they could do an H20 where the driveway is, if they needed to move it in that direction.
Okay. No other questions, thank you. Want to go back now?
Just out of curiosity, what, why are they requiring the removal of the fire pit?
I wasn't involved in the Conservation Commission hearing, but I suspect oftentimes people locate fire pits down by the water's edge, where it's nice to sit and enjoy a fire, and probably didn't have approval to do that, so Conservation told them to take it out.
Probably just the distance to the, oh, two things I got to find out.
Frank, you have any questions?
No, Scott asked my questions and got my answers, so, thank you.
Tony?
All my questions have been asked.
Wow. So we'll go to the public. Anybody have any questions on this project from the public? What? Okay, quiet night.
It's early yet.
Tis, tis. I shouldn't get excited, you're right.
Mark? Motion to close.
I'll second.
We have a motion to close and a second? Any further discussion?
No.
No? Motion to approve of conditions? Did you vote it?
I suggested.
All those in favor of closing?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Now you can go.
Motion to approve of conditions.
Second that a second time.
Findings.
Findings. Property is located 28 Whitecaps Drive in Seacoast Beach neighborhood. Ostrowski is the owner. It's in an RC zoning, in the RC zoning district. It's also in a Water Resource Protection District, which Mr. Clower just addressed. They're seeking a special permit under section 240-10.2A to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling, and a special permit under section 247.7B to have an increase in the, to allow for more than 15% impervious surface. And the existing dwelling has 1,322 square feet. The proposed dwelling has 2,054 square feet, but the footprint is basically the same. The lot size is 10,963 square feet, where 40,000 is the required minimum currently. Street frontage is 95, where 100 feet is the required minimum now. Right now, Whitecaps Drive is a public way. The nonconformity here is the setback from Jenkins Pond. It's 31 feet from the 20-foot contour line, where 50 feet are required, and it's to be improved to 32 feet. Lot coverage by structure, both are within acceptable, both are within the limits, excuse me, lot coverage by structure is within the limits of the zoning bylaw, and lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is within the limits of the zoning bylaw. The height of the property will be 28.4, 28 feet, 4 inches, which is within the limits of the zoning bylaw. We note that the Board of Health has allowed, has approved the continued use of the existing septic system, which was granted by variance in the year 2012. Conservation Commission has advised us that they have approved the project with an order of condition issued on August 21, 2024. The engineering department has asked us to consider stormwater, prevent runoff from the property, and erosion and sediment control. They've also advised us that an outfall pipe shown on the original submission is actually not on the lot and not of any concern. Subsequently, at the request of the zoning board of appeals, we received a letter from Falmouth Engineering on October 30, 2024, informing us that for purposes of the Water Resource Protection District, they have substituted a crushed stone driveway for the paved driveway. There'll be dry wells for roof runoff and no increase in septic flow along with native plantings to buffer the pond and minimal disturbances of soil. They have asked for a special permit under section 240-10.2A. We make the finding that the proposed project will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Under section 240-12.1E, special permit, we determine that the site is adequate for the proposed use, the site is suitable for the proposed use. There'll be no impact on traffic flow and safety. There'll be no impact on neighborhood visual character, views and vistas, that there's been provision made for adequate septic, adequate disposal of sewage. There are adequate utilities in the neighborhood, and there's no impact on affordable housing. With respect to section 247.7B, the Water Resource Protection District, we find that we can grant the special permit for impervious surface in excess of 15%, but less than 20. It will be at 18.7, and the finding is that there will be no unnecessary impact on groundwater and that the groundwater recharge system will not degrade the groundwater. And the, based upon the engineer's letter, we can determine that there'll be no effect on the potential water quality of the water body. There'll be no unnecessary disturbance of soil, and the, there's not, there'll be no excess max loading of the nearby groundwater.
Sounds good. No letters?
No letters, and no opposition at the hearing.
And conditions?
Our plans?
Our plans?
Normal working hours.
Working will be tough there, too.
They can park at the beach.
That's true. They do, they do it the right time of year.
There's actually a parking lot just down the road to the right for the private beach.
Yeah, all boards? Com-com?
Noreen, anything else?
You got working hours, right? Did we say that one?
Yep.
Yeah, so I had a note from the prior meeting about the office to remain case open for the bedroom count. And I think also the recharge area, though, is be included, to be permanently maintained by the owner.
You get that one?
Yep, no, that's part of the, that's a condition within the bylaws also.
All set?
Except I, I'll answer my own question. The reduction in nitrogen is from them, A, adding a dry well and the crushed stone in the driveway. Slows down the, so, anyway, that was why that is a reduction.
They're also removing and not replacing a shed, right?
Removing and not?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Think we got it all? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None?
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Kev.
You're not done with me.
And now we have 134 Edgewater, Edgewater Drive East.
Paul T. Cummings Jr. of Western Massachusetts has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A4 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structure. Property is located at 134 Edgewater Drive East, Seacoast Shores, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. The property is in the RC zoning district. It's in the coastal pond overlay district. The flood zone is AE13. There's currently a single-family, three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-story building of 1,586 square feet. The proposal is for a single-family, three-bedroom, two-story, single-family home of 1,711 square feet. There are no previous decisions of the board of appeals. The lot is 7,700 square feet in a district which requires, currently requires a minimum of 40,000. The street frontage is, according to my reading of the plan, 75 feet, where 100 feet is required currently. It's public right-of-way. The nonconforming structure is 20.4% lot coverage by structure, where 20% is the limit without a special permit, which they've now applied for. The neighborhood average of lot coverage by structure is 16.53%. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is 35.5%. It'll be reduced to 34.5%. The limit is 40. The existing, other existing nonconformities, it's the setback from Charles River, which is a water resource, is 39 feet, where 50 is required, and the setback from the street is 20.6, where 25 feet are required. The sidelines are conforming. The height of the current, the structure will be 33%. We have some referrals from engineering. They have, again, asked us to consider that stormwater be contained on the property. They've also advised us that there may be a driveway permit that may be required. The Board of Health said we're okay for a three-bedroom house. The setback must be 100 feet from the wetland, and to work with the Board of Health if there's any issues. The Conservation Commission has issued an order of condition on September 11, 2024. The Water Department advises that a 2-inch PE sleeve may be necessary because of the proximity to the septic system, but if it's changed, they may not. So again, you have to check with the Water Department. Fire Department's okay. Building Department has no comment. Planning Board has no comment. Assessors have no comment. We have seven letters of support on file.
We did have a letter from Health that had quite a few concerns.
Yes, it did.
Yeah.
I expect Mr. Clower's going to address.
He's going to wrap it up for us. Okay, Kev, you're at bat.
So, thank you. For the record, Kevin Clower. I am before you, representing Paul Cummings, the owner of 134 Edgewater Drive East. Mr. Cummings is here with us tonight, also joined by Mark Dibb of Cape and Islands Engineering, and Denise Benoli, who is the architect on this project. Mr. Cummings is seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling on this property. So this particular property is located in Seacoast Shores, near the northern end of the peninsula. It is 7,770 square feet of upland. Frank stole most of my presentation, so I'm going to repeat a lot of it, and I apologize. It's a residential C zoning district, and approximately half the house, existing house, is located in the AE flood zone. But as we know, if any portion of it is in, it is all in. So presently, it is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. The footprint is just shy of 1,600 square feet, and it's nonconforming to front yard setback, 20.6, where 25 is required. Rear yard setback to the waters of Vineyard Sound, which is 39, where 50 is required, and lot coverage by structure being 20.4%, where 20% is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. The Cummings own this property for about 34 years, and the dwelling requires significant upgrades. Given the nature of the repair and upgrades that it does require and the location in the flood zone, they're seeking to raise and reconstruct, which would be pursuant to the building code and FEMA regulations as well. So proposed plans do not affect the existing nonconforming setbacks. The front yard setback is 20.7. I'm not going to insult you by calling that an improvement from 20.6, and the rear yard setback remains the same. Lot coverage by structure does increase from 20.4 to 22%, but would be eliminated as a nonconformity with the issuance of a special permit. The bedroom count remains the same. The proposed ridge is 33 feet, which is below the 35 feet that's allowed. And lastly, this would comply with FEMA and flood zone requirements. This does require a special permit under 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A4. Under 10.2A, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided not substantially more detrimental than what exists. This board is asked to consider the standards of 240-12.1E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new nonconformities created, and the existing nonconforming setbacks remain unchanged. A lot of the same requirements stand in for 240-11.3A4. Under that provision, properties within the RC zoning district may have lot coverage by structure exceeding 20% with the issuance of a special permit. And in doing so, the board's asked to consider they are the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow and packs of views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embayments. We did prepare a lot comparison worksheet. This house is very close to the median footprint. The dwelling as designed, I believe, is in character with the neighborhood, especially considering its compliance with the flood zone standards. As mentioned, the Cummings have been here for 34 years. They're sensitive to the area and the neighborhood and their design of this property. There should be no impact to views and vistas from public ways, and no effect of nitrogen, as there's no increase in the bedroom count, and there is a new Title V system being proposed. This project represents significant improvements over the existing conditions. There's no new dimensional nonconformities, there's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbalance the benefits that I've outlined. There's nothing here that is more, substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe this meets all the requirements of 240-10.2A, 11.3A4, and 12.1E. I'd be happy to address any questions the board might have at this time. Ms. Murphy, you mentioned a referral from Health. I'm not, I don't think I received a referral from Health with a number of questions, but we will have to comply with all Health requirements regardless.
You can take a ganderite if you want. He was worried about setbacks.
So, the engineer is here tonight, so we can inquire of Mr. Dibb, but I would say, you know, this is not a blanket approval. Anything we do is going to have to go through approval for the Health Department as well, and we'll have to satisfy all of their conditions and requirements. And to the extent there would be any change to the plans, we'd have to come back to this board.
You see it, Matt?
Yeah, it's just saying that they can't determine on the plan whether there's a 100-foot setback, I guess, for the soil absorption. It's item three?
I don't have the.
He doesn't have a copy of it yet.
Oh, sorry. I thought you might have been leaking around for it.
No, I checked. I mean, I didn't have that in my file, so.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, there, this is what we call maximum feasible compliance, so there's an existing septic system here. We're going to have to come as close to compliance as possible. They're not expanding, so they're, the Board of Health effectively has to allow them to install a system. Whether there's some variances granted in order to do so depends on the details, but the Board of Health has this maximum feasible compliance concept where they can't eliminate your right to a septic if you have an existing one, regardless of the conditions. So we'll have to comply with all of their requirements.
Yeah, when I read it, it was just mostly a setback thing.
Yeah, setback, 100, they wanted confirmation that it's setback 100 feet from the wetland resource, okay. Basically, that's what they were.
They could understand.
Maybe you have to put that on here?
Yeah, make it a condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think you could just say we have to comply with any Board of Health regulations.
With all boards, yeah.
And we have to get, we have to get a permit through them as well, so.
Yeah, that works. Do you want to ask any questions down there?
No, I do have a few questions, but there are things that Jen could answer and Kevin couldn't, and just to satisfy my own curiosity.
Okay.
No, and I understand the septic issue, but he's also correct, so, no, I'm good.
That's a nice, nice change. Probably the nicest house that I've seen that we're going to raise and replace, or potentially raise and replace, depending on vote, on your lot comparison worksheet. So the average is 16.53 in the area, and we're at 22.0.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. I guess I'm not going to ask about IA space maybe, because it might be a little tight. We had seven letters of support, so I'm good. Thank you very much.
That is a potential problem down the road, though.
Yep. Frank, you have anything?
No, no questions. Just for the record, under lot coverage, why is there no effect on the nitrogen load? You've mentioned there isn't, but can you just state for the record why?
There's no increase in the number of bedrooms, and there's a new Title V system, replacing a dated Title V system, so there'll be no increase in nitrogen.
And there's no area to put for future IA system, even though the Board of Health may require it?
So, I can't speak to that. I think that, you know, as I've noted, we're going to have to comply with any Board of Health requirements. If there's any changes that are necessitated to the plan based on those requirements, we'll come back to modify.
So you can figure it out later, that's all.
Build the plan as we fly it.
Probably have to put it somewhere else and then pump it back, I would imagine. That's how it's going to work.
Everybody up here all set? We'll go to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions on this project? Look at us moving along.
Did you have any questions?
No, I do not. Mark, will you help me out?
Oh, yeah, I had a motion to close. Frank?
Second it.
We have a motion to close in a second. Any other discussion up here? We're all set, all those in favor of closing? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Wow.
Motion to approve of conditions.
I'll second.
Okay.
There we go. We have a motion in a second. All right, let's do findings. Wow.
Okay, the property is at 134 Edgewater Drive East, Seacoast Shores, East Falmouth, owned by Paul T. Cummings Jr. The zoning district is RC. They're seeking a special permit under section 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A4 to raise and rebuild existing nonconforming, uh, single-family dwelling and increase lot coverage by structure. Currently, there's a single-family, um, a single-family, 1.5-story dwelling at 1,586 square feet. It's being increased to a single-family, three-bedroom, two-story, single-family dwelling, 1,711 square feet. The lot size is 770, 7,770 square feet. The street frontage is 75 feet. It's public right-of-way. Now, with respect to lot coverage by structure, it's currently 20.4 without a special permit, but it will increase to 22% lot coverage by structure, and the special permit will cover that. The lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving will actually be reduced from 35.5 to 34.5, where the limit is 40, so that's conforming. The setbacks from Charles River and from the street remain essentially the same. The side setbacks are conforming to the zoning bylaw. The height of the proposed building is 33 feet. We had comments from the engineering department with respect to stormwater being contained on the property and a possible, possibility of application for a driveway permit. The Board of Health has informed us that they are satisfied with the three-bedroom, the septic, excuse me, the septic system for a three-bedroom house, but they want to confirmation that there's a 100-foot setback from the wetland, and they ask that you work with the Board of Health to confirm that. The Conservation Commission has issued an order of condition on September 11, 2024. The Water Department suggests that depending upon the location of the septic system, there may be a 2-inch sleeve necessary for the water service. That's to be determined. There are no comments from Fire, Building, Planning Board. There are no comments from fire, building, planning board, or assessors, and there are seven letters in support. With respect to the provisions of 20-10.2A, nonconforming structures, we make the finding that there will not be—that the proposed structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. With respect to the conditions for a special permit, as outlined in section 240-12.1E, we determine that there's adequate—that the site is adequate for the proposed use. The site is suitable for the proposed use. There's no impact on traffic flow and safety, no impact on neighborhood visual character views and vistas. There's adequate provision for the disposal of sewage, and there's adequate utilities and no impact on affordable housing. Now, with respect to the special permit under section 240-11.3A4, lot coverage, there's the lot which allows for lot coverage by—25% lot coverage by structure in an R.C. district. The size and height of the proposed structure are relative to the neighborhood average. There's no impact on shadows on adjacent properties. Views and vistas from public ways do not appear to be affected. And with respect to nitrogen and coastal abeyments, the applicant has assured—has presented evidence that there'll be the same number of bedrooms, and there'll be a new Title V septic system to cover that issue.
It's a lot.
That's a mouthful.
All right, conditions. All boards, I read—did you read in the CONCOM that the dock is bigger than what's licensed?
I did not.
That they have to reapply?
I didn't read that.
I didn't read that.
Well, he'll just have to comply with CONCOM conditions, so I think we can just leave it at that. Do you agree, Noreen? Did you read that?
Yeah.
So, Board of Health, CONCOM, that will cover the setback if we do it per board. Yeah, just all boards.
How long's the dock been there?
I didn't—I don't know.
CONCOM doesn't believe in grandfathering.
So, there's no 10-year—
Okay. I just read her comments.
That's the building code, and that's zoning and building, different than the wetland regulations.
Yeah, because I walked down, and I didn't see where it looked like it was spliced in any fashion or added onto, so—
I just read the conditions that CONCOM wrote. That was, you know—uh, we need a driveway permit, right? I read that in there.
Can't get a building permit without a driveway permit, so—
There you go.
Work hours.
Work hours, yep.
Construction vehicles on site.
Construction vehicles.
Construction materials on site.
Tony's got them.
Vehicles and construction materials on site.
Noreen, anything?
Uh, no shed, absent permission. Though, don't really have space, but—
If the height's 33, do we have to worry about that, do you think?
Yes.
35 is—
No, I mean, 35 is the max, so I don't think there's going to be an issue.
Okay. All right, I think we're good.
Well, one of the things you might consider is that your setbacks are—well, your setbacks are fairly—they're very close. Do you want to certify plot plan for the foundation? So, you want to certify plot plan for the foundation?
Sure, we can add that on. Anybody else have anything? Noreen, you good? Okay, I think we're all set. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Thank you very much.
They're on a roll.
Moving along.
Again, certainly.
He's going to jinx us. And now, we have 10 Palm Street. There's another good one.
10 Palm Street. This is application 9824. John and Eileen M. Bacon, Quincy, Massachusetts, have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A4 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to remove the existing deck and construct an addition exceeding 20% lot coverage by structure. Property is located at number 10 Palm Street in the Maravista section of East Falmouth. And as for pertinent information, it's in an R.C. zoning district. It's in Little Pond Coastal Pond Overlay District. Flood zone is AE12. There's currently a single-family four-bedroom, single-family dwelling at 1,401 square feet. The proposal is for a single-family dwelling, four-bedroom, 1,770 square feet. The lot is 7,200 square feet in a district that currently requires 40,000. The street frontage is 90 feet in a district that currently requires 100 feet. Palm Street is a public right-of-way at this location. The lot coverage by structure exist—existing is 19.46%. They are seeking to increase it to 24.6%. The limit is 20, thus the necessity for the special permit. The neighborhood average of lot coverage by structure is 20.11% per the calculated worksheet. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is 26.7%. Proposed to increase to 33.2%. The limit is 40, so it's conforming. The nonconformity on the setbacks is the street. It is setback 20.1 feet from the street, and all the other setbacks conform. The height of the building is 21 feet, and the proposal is to continue—is not to increase the height of the building. We have a referral from the engineering department. They, again, are concerned that all stormwater runoff be contained on site. Again, they've mentioned a possible necessity for a driveway permit, and they want us to discuss erosion and sediment control. The property is on the sewer, so we do not have a septic issue. The Conservation Commission has issued a negative request for determination of applicability, so they're basically satisfied with the situation. The Water Department has requested that the water meter be relocated to the inside of the house. The assessors have no comment. Planning board has no comment. Building Department has no comment. Fire Department has no comment. We have one letter in favor with no objections.
Thank you again for the record, Kevin Clower. I'm before you now representing John and Eileen Bacon, the owners of 10 Palm Street. They are seeking permission to alter the existing nonconforming dwelling on this property. 10 Palm is effectively located centrally in the Maravista Peninsula. As you know, this is a very dense residential neighborhood. This particular lot is 7,200 square feet, and it is in the R.C. zoning district. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of 1,401 square feet. As it exists, it is nonconforming only with regards to the front yard setback being 20.1 feet where 25 is required, otherwise conforming to setback and lot coverage requirements. The applicant's plans are for an addition to the western side of the home, which will replace the existing deck with living space. This would include a small covered deck at the front, a mudroom, and most importantly, a family room. The existing room has very limited communal space, for lack of a better term. There's no change to the existing nonconforming setback. The lot coverage by structure would increase to 24.6%, which is allowable by a special permit from this board. The bedroom count does not change, remains at four, which is what is allowed within the sewer district. And the addition does not include any expansion to the second-floor space. The ceilings are cathedral in the living area, so there's no change to the second-floor living area or bedrooms up there. The existing ridge height is 21 feet 10 inches, and the proposed ridge for the addition is 20 feet 2 and 1/2 inches. So, this requires a special permit from you under 10.2A and 11.3A4. Under 240-10.2A, pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, but you have to find that it's not substantially more detrimental than what exists. And in doing so, you're asked to consider whether or not there's any new nonconformities, whether it impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there is no new nonconformity created. The existing nonconformity is entirely unaffected. The proposed lot coverage by structure, again, is 24.6, which is allowable by special permit. And structures, paving, and parking is 35.2, which is well below the 40% allowed by right. As to the standards of 240-11.3A4, again, you're asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, impacts on views and vistas from public way, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. This house is larger than what exists today. However, it remains in character with the neighborhood. Maravista is a dynamic and changing neighborhood with a variety of styles and sizes of homes. This design is certainly not out of character, and in a nice change of pace utilizes the existing structure rather than raising and rebuilding. I believe it fits both aesthetically and visually. There are limited impacts on shadow or views and vistas from the public way. Again, the ridge height remains below the existing by about 8 inches. There's no effect of nitrogen. This is on sewer, and there's no change to the bedroom count. This project represents a significant improvement for the homeowners, provides usable living space for the family. There's no adverse effects here, and nothing about this proposal substantially more detrimental than what exists today. For those reasons, I believe this meets all the requirements of 240-10.2A, 11.3A4, and 12.1E. I would ask that the board grant the special permit, and will of course be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Sounds good. Mike?
No, it's nice. They're certainly maxing out the—their property, but in a tasteful way, as far as I'm concerned. The neighborhood's changing, and there's precious little we can do to stop it if we wanted to. I have no problem with it. It's nice.
Same comments. I think it's a nice change for the applicant. Did a nice job, so—
I thought they blended the addition with the existing home really well, and—
The elevations look good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. No further questions.
Frank, you have anything?
No, I did a site visit, and it seems like an appropriate use of the property.
I agree. It looks like a great project. You have anything?
It's not the largest house. Number six is at 34.1, so this fits in very nicely. It's really a nice addition to the neighborhood.
Now, you can say it, because this is my last one, so—
Any further questions up here before we go to the public? All set up here? Anybody from the public want to talk on this project? Wow, this is a roll.
Motion to close.
Seconded.
Motion to close in a second. Any further discussion up here? No? Wow. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Moving along. Go ahead, Scott.
Motion to approve the conditions.
Seconded that.
Let's do findings, Frank.
Okay, we have 10 Palm Street. Maravista is in an R.C. zoning district. It's in the Little Pond Coastal Overlay District. The flood zone is AE12. There's currently a single-family dwelling, four bedrooms, 1,401 square feet. The proposal is to increase it to a single-family dwelling by addition, to increase it to 1,770 square feet. It's going to remain a four-bedroom house. The street frontage is 90 in a district that currently requires 100 feet. The lot size is 7,200 square feet in a zoning district that currently requires 40,000. Palm Street is a public right-of-way at this location. The lot coverage by structure at the present time is 19.46%. It's going to be increased to 24.6%. The limit is 20. We have the authority to increase it to no more than 25% by special permit. The neighborhood average for lot coverage by structure is 20.11% per the worksheet. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is 26.7% to be increased to 33.2%. It's within the 40% limit allowed by the zoning bylaw. The nonconforming setback is the distance to the street, which is currently 20.1 feet in a district that requires 25 feet. That nonconformity will remain. The westerly setback, which is currently 36.3%, is going to be decreased by about 20—to 18.3% because of the addition, which is on the westerly side of the house. The height of the house will not change. It's 21 feet. Comments from engineering, stormwater runoff is to be contained on the site. They have noted a driveway permit may be necessary, and they've asked for the enforcement of erosion and sediment controls. The property is served by a sewer, so there are no septic system concerns. Conservation Commission has issued a negative request for determination of applicability. Water Department has asked that the water meter be relocated to the basement of the house. The assessors have no comment. Planning board, no comment. Building Department, no comment. Fire Department, no comment. There's one letter from the neighborhood with no objections. With respect to section 240-10.2A of the zoning bylaw for nonconforming structures, we determine that this proposed structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, and there will be no new nonconformities. The special permit under—conditions under section 240-12.1E, we determine that the site is adequate for the proposed use. It is suitable for the proposed use. There's no impact on traffic flow and safety. There's no impact on neighborhood visual character, views, and vistas. There is adequate sewage disposal as determined by the presence of the sewer. There's adequate utilities, and there's no impact on affordable housing. And with respect to the special permit under section 240-11.3A4, lot coverage by structure up to 25% by special permit, we determine that the site—the size and height of the proposed structure is relates to the neighborhood averages. There is no apparent—no testimony suggesting there's impact of shadows on adjacent property, nor views and vistas from public ways being impaired, and because of the sewer, we don't have concern about nitrogen on coastal abeyments.
Nothing from the public, all set?
Yeah, one letter of support.
Yep. So, now, conditions. All town boards? Work hours?
Construction materials and vehicles on site.
Foundation plan, because we're getting to 24.6, or—
Yeah, we are getting up the, yeah.
Yes.
Yep. Nothing else? Yeah? Noreen, you think of anything else? Work hours? I think we're good.
Yeah, construction equipment and materials.
Yeah, you did that one, yeah. I think we're good. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? You're all right, Frank? All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Hope the rest of your night goes smoothly.
I wish it was like this every weekend.
So do I.
Wishful thinking.
All right, next up, we have 737 Gifford Street, Vertex Towers.
Do you have the file on that? Would you notice?
Why? I do not. I have—I have this. That's all I have.
Is it a card?
The card?
What is in here? Okay. You're done with these, right?
Yep, we're done with those. This is public hearing 91-24, Vertex Towers LLC of Providence, Rhode Island. They've applied to the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit and/or variance pursuant to sections 240-6.1B of the zoning board of appeals of the zoning bylaw of the town of Falmouth to construct a 130-foot-tall monopole to be placed inside a fence compound at property known as 737 Gifford Street in Falmouth, Massachusetts. The property is located in an AGA—excuse me, an AGB zoning district. It's for a 130-foot monopole in a fenced compound for wireless communications purposes. The current use of the property is outdoor self-storage. The proposed fence compound is 55 feet by 70 feet. The lot is 11.6 acres in a zoning district that currently requires 1 acre, basically, or 45,000 square feet. There is 423 feet of frontage on Gifford Street. The current requirement is 100. Gifford Street is a public right-of-way at this location. There was a balloon test in April of 2024 where they floated a balloon so everybody could take a look at the proposed height of the monopole. could take a look at the proposed height of the monopole. That was voluntary, although the members, I believe, all did go to take a look at it. Now, under Section 240 6.1B, in an agricultural district, TV and radio antennas of 50 feet or more require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. The setbacks are not really relevant to this particular zoning appeal or application, but there are a number of referrals. The Cape Cod Commission on August 25, 2024 issued an approval on development of regional impact concluding that the benefits of the proposed project are greater than its detriments. We have a referral from the Water Department with no comment. There'll be no water used on the site. The Building Department has no comment. However, they have asked for inquiry into a fall zone, which I'll leave up to the applicant to discuss. The engineer again has cited that stormwater runoff should be contained on-site and erosion and sediment control provisions should be adhered to. Our Communications Department has no comment. Our Fire Department says that the project will require a flammable storage permit and a tank permit. Conservation has no comment. Planning Board has no comment. The assessors have no comment. Now, for public information, we're going to announce that the Telecommunications Act of 1996 applies to this particular project, and there are a couple of provisions that we do not consider under other projects we'll have to consider here. One, if there's any people who have concerns about the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, they must bring those to the Federal Communications Commission. We have no authority to discuss that issue. And finally, the Telecommunications Act of 1996 basically says that a local board shall not grant or deny a permit for a cellphone tower which has the effect of prohibiting personal wireless service.
Sounds good.
Good evening. My name is Francis Parisian, attorney representing the applicant Vertex Towers LLC. As was read in the notice tonight, I believe we're here seeking a dimensional variance under your zoning bylaw, but your zoning bylaw is a little confusing. And I noted the last time a similar facility was proposed in a similar zone, you issued a special permit. So I asked for both a variance and a special permit, and we can sort this out as we go through the evening. As was read in the notice, we filed the application back in March of this year. It was immediately referred to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. We went through several Cape Cod Commission public hearings and in August got a determination that there was, that we complied with all the requirements for development of regional impact, and now we're back in front of the Falmouth zoning board. By way of introduction, Vertex Towers, what we call a wireless infrastructure developer. We're not a cellphone company. We build wireless infrastructure. What's happened in the world is the names you've heard of before in the wireless world, Verizon and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have pretty much gotten out of the real estate business and partnered up with folks like Vertex to build wireless infrastructure. We are very active in the Massachusetts and throughout all of New England. We've built towers in Wellfleet, other various umbrellas. I've been involved in other towers in the town of Falmouth. There's a tower on Thomas Landers Lane that's been there for about 25 years. I'm not as young as I look, and I was involved in that. I was involved in a tower on 28 by the Davy Tree landscaping facility down by the airport on the Mashpee Line. And so the Vertex team has an immense amount of experience dealing with both the regulatory issues coming up in the town of Falmouth and Cape Cod, but also inciting these things very appropriately to mitigate public concern and to provide the technical requirements and also be as least impactful as possible. In this particular case, Verizon Wireless has told us they need a facility at this site. Verizon, as you're aware, is one of the largest telecommunications companies in America. They have, well, this is known as Falmouth 7 to them, which means they have six other antenna facilities throughout Falmouth, including all the towers I mentioned and other ones throughout town. And notwithstanding that, there are still gaps in coverage. This tower is, as you know, at the intersection of Brick Hill Road and Gifford Street. It's kind of diagonally across from the high school, which is actually a high-volume usage for Verizon. And what Verizon is encompassing is both coverage issues and also capacity issues. When you get dense areas like the high school, for example, where there's a lot of cellphone users, they're suffering from capacity issues. So even areas where they have some coverage or minimal coverage, or even that they had coverage three and four years ago, with the newer technologies, the higher data speeds that our phones now do, availability that our phones do, you know, before we thought they were telecommunication devices, now they're internet access devices and streaming video. And that technology requires better coverage and more facilities throughout Falmouth and throughout all of Cape Cod. We filed a very extensive application package as required by your zoning bylaw. I'm not going to go through it. As also was, we also filed even more information with the Cape Cod Commission. They give an incredibly thorough analysis with respect to a lot more criteria than the town of Falmouth zoning board is charged with. They look at impact on the nitrogen loading and environmental impact. They look at impact on visibility. They look at impact on the neighborhood. They look at the benefits to the town. They look at the impact on cultural resources and historic resources and made a determination that this facility does not have any significant environmental impact, does not have any impact on environmental resources. And the great benefit by increased telecommunications is certainly a benefit to the town of Falmouth. They engage wireless consultants and engineers. They have a very large staff of people that looked at this application very carefully to determine basically the premise that there is a gap in coverage and that there really is no viable alternative, given the land use in Falmouth, given the surrounding neighborhoods. We did an immense amount of research to confirm that there really is nowhere else that we can go, given all the land use, conservation, and other restrictions that impact the development of these type of facilities. I don't think I need to sell telecommunications in general. You know, over 50% of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have cut the cord and are only using wireless as their only source of communications. Over 80% of 911 calls are made by cellphones. And over the last several years, as through the pandemic, people are working from home, educating from home, and it just requires better telecommunications throughout Falmouth, throughout all of Cape Cod, and quite frankly, throughout all of America. And Verizon and folks like Vertex are working very hard to fill in those gaps in coverage. I think there's actually a recognized need here on Cape Cod. Over the last several years, there've been natural disasters and other things. I think the Cape had recognized that there are a better need for telecommunications for public safety purposes, for, you know, commercial cellphone service, and also for residential service. I think, and quite frankly, we're working as hard as we can, given the length of time and the amount of expense and the amount of due diligence that we need to do. It's challenging to get to all of the Cape all at once, but we're working very diligently. And we have several projects in development similar to this throughout all of Cape Cod. We provided an immense amount of data throughout, in the application package that was also submitted to the Cape Cod Commission to just show that there's a gap in coverage. This is just one slide of many slides that we provided to the town and the Cape Cod Commission showing where the site is and where the gaps are. And really, what's going on here is that even though that you might, somebody might say, well, my phone works at my house in the area, or my phone works along Brick Hill Road, what's happening is this technology is moving away from a mobile technology and more to a residential technology. And when you go into denser structures like a house or the high school or the commercial properties in the area, those structures become an impediment to the signal as well. So even areas where there might be some spotty coverage along Brick Hill Road or Gifford Street, there's still a demand for better service because when you start going into the area, you know, you might get coverage at the high school football field, but once you go inside the building, it coverage drops dramatically. Same thing with the residential neighborhoods in the area. As people start using them in their basements and in their, in the interior of their homes as opposed to in their cars, it just requires a better telecommunications signal. And we submitted an immense amount of data, you know, both with statistical and theoretical analysis based on software analysis, but also drive test data that shows where the gaps in coverage are and/or the diminished signals are based on just the area around Brick Hill and Gifford Street. We also did an immense amount of research to show that there really, there's no existing infrastructure. You know, we looked out about a mile in each direction and, you know, there are existing towers or cell sites along Route 28. There's existing cell sites along Route 28, which the main street area where we are now. But in that area, as you get toward the, what I would call the center of Falmouth, there's really no existing infrastructure and no anyplace else to put antennas like this. And when you look at a map like this, you see everything to the north and the west of this is very densely populated, dense, small residential lots that doesn't provide an opportunity for a facility like this. And all the land to the south and west is around the pond are conservation restricted with wetlands restrictions and also deed restrictions that impede the development of this type of property. And so we were able to, and we looked at probably 30 different properties in the area and submitted all this and showed that there really isn't an alternative to this based on the land use in the area and the availability of land suitable. And so we've presented an immense amount of data throughout the application package. The lot itself is 11 acres. It has frontage on Gifford Street. It's attractive for us because it's really already been developed. There's a large outdoor self-storage facility. I think the landowners stores boats seasonally and other campers and things like that. In addition, it abuts an indoor self-storage facility, so it's more commercial and industrial in nature. There's also a very large power line easement that bifurcs the property. So even though this is not a public utility, it's a utility-like use against the existing utility use that, you know, kind of means that it's more appropriate for this type of lot as opposed to the residential lots to the east and north. There was a question regarding fall zones. I hate to use that word because it implies something that doesn't happen, but I think the town's regulations don't impose what we call a tower height setback. A lot of towns do. The Cape Cod Commission actually requires a 125% tower height setback, that we be more than 125% of the height of the tower from all abutting property lines. And this site amply meets it because of the size of the lot and the location of the facility in the lot. The facility itself is very similar to other similar-type facilities. It's just a small fenced-in compound, about 2,700 square feet. The good thing is, is as technology evolves, the ground-based equipment is getting smaller and smaller, and they go in smaller type. They don't go in like big shelters like we used to build. They go in smaller, like a refrigerator-sized cabinet. So there'll be a couple of small cabinets on some small concrete foundations, but for the most part, it's very non-invasive, especially going on an area that's already pretty much developed. The lot, the exact area where we are has been previously developed and utilized by the landlords, so we're not taking down any significant existing vegetation. And in addition, other than a small foundation for the tower and some small concrete pads for the equipment, there's no significant increase in impervious surface, so stormwater runoff is very easily contained within the compound and the surrounding area without any kind of erosion control or any kind of impact on abutting properties. The tower itself is a monopole. It's be 130 feet tall on which Verizon will attach antennas. And we also make sure that we build it with the structural integrity and the height for multiple telecommunications companies so that it's really hard to get everybody, Verizon and T-Mobile and AT&amp;T, to all focus on Falmouth and this area of Falmouth at the same time. But we build facilities with the forethought to make sure that we build them with the height and structural integrity to accommodate multiple telecommunications companies, which is again another requirement of the Cape Cod Commission's regulations with respect to these type of facilities. The other thing, these facilities are very low-powered facilities. They're not designed to cover all of Falmouth, just, you know, a very amorphous mile in each direction. And the reason for that, it's a two-way communication. Your cellphone is talking to the nearest antenna, and you're holding up your head like this. This is a low-powered communication. The return communication is low-powered, so they routinely broadcast out about 100 watts. As by comparison, WBZ in Boston, one of the first AM radio stations in the United States, is designed to cover all of eastern Massachusetts. I think you can get WBZ down here in Falmouth. That broadcasts out at 50,000 watts. This facility broadcasts out about 100 watts to provide coverage for a very small area. And there's ample examples of facilities in Falmouth throughout all the Cape Cod, throughout all the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to show that these facilities routinely are significantly in, much lower than applicable FCC limits with respect to radio frequency emissions. And what this is really designed to do is cover, provide great coverage to the neighborhood to the east and north of Gifford Street, the high school area, going up towards other existing facilities on Thomas Landers Road, and then connecting up with sites already down in the lower 28 and the main street area of Falmouth. As was noted, we put up a balloon. I notified Noreen. I know the board got notice. I put it out in the paper. We notified all the abutters who were going to get notice of this hearing tonight and to show what the visibility, or more importantly, the lack of visibility was. And I'm just going to try to skip to that if I can figure out how to do it. I think those would be very helpful. We engage engineers to take this. They certify that the height of the balloon is 130 feet. It's actually a little higher than 130 feet. The string is 130 feet, so the balloon's up about 135 feet. And then they can just drive around and show where there's visibility, or more importantly, where there's no visibility. And given, you know, all of the conservation land to the west, there's really no need to go out there. The town has a transfer facility of some sort across the street, but really no impact. And what these circles shows, where I have photographs of where the tower was visible as noted by green, where there's some partial visibility through the trees as noted by yellow, and then as no visibility as noted by the red. And where there's some visibility, we actually engineers to do photo simulations to show what it's going to look like, that they can do very accurate renditions. So I'm just going to, it looks like photos 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 are the closest and the most visible, so we'll just kind of jump to those. This is taken from right at Gifford Street, looking into the access driveway to the lot and the self-storage facility. You can see the balloon over the trees. And we did this back in April before the leaves came on the trees. So, you know, as the leaves come on, it'll substantially mitigate the view of the tower. But that's really what it looks like kind of behind the trees there of minimal visual impact. Farther down, Gifford Street to the south, looking north, past the self-storage facility, the balloon is visible, but there's a lot of other things going on. And, you know, that's what it will look like from Gifford Street. But as you can imagine, you're kind of in a tunnel there, and as you go off either to the west or the east, you lose visibility by existing vegetation. Similarly, farther down, closer to the nearest residential neighborhood to the south, you know, I think you're getting now about 3/4 a mile away, there's some visibility, but as you see, it starts to blend in with all the other utility infrastructure, the poles and things like that. This is taken from a little bit closer, right across from the self-storage facility, and again, you know, taking advantage of existing tree canopy. And then the only other place that it was significantly visible was right at the self-storage facility, the same landowner. And what this shows is not on day one, but at full build-out. We anticipate that AT&amp;T and Verizon and T-Mobile and other telecommunications companies, so at full build-out, that's what it'll look like in an area that's really already industrially and commercially developed. So I think it, you know, from a visibility standpoint, we picked a pretty appropriate location. And this is just taken from the high school parking lot, looking across back towards the facility. And again, there's some visibility, but, you know, the other thing you'll notice is that there's a substantial power line easement that comes across here that also has some visibility along Brick Hill Road that sort of kind of blends in with that as much as possible. This is from the football field or maybe the one of the fields over there. And again, some visibility in the background, but given all the other tall structures, the utility poles that are already there, it's of minimal visual. utility poles that are already there, it's of minimal visual impact. And all the other places along Gifford Street, along, farther down Gifford Street, in the residential neighborhoods to the east, and also along, this is taken down Brick Hill Road, from the west, looking east, there's just no visibility. I'm sure you read it. I submitted a 30-page memorandum going through all the requirements for zoning variance for a facility like this, that there's got to be something specific to this property and that there's a hardship and that desirable relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Given the need for better telecommunications, given the lack of alternatives, given the fact that this particular facade meets the area, that the coverage rejected above Verizon and multiple telecommunications companies, that's really the uniqueness that satisfies the unique, the topography and the area in general, the lack of other alternatives for, from a land use perspective, is really what makes this property so unique that it satisfies the variance criteria. And the need to close the gap in coverage creates the hardship. We really can't go anywhere else. If there were tall structures around, if there were other towers that someone else had built, Verizon would have looked at that. But because there's nothing tall, the area that's suitable for that type of antenna structure, that's really the hardship that satisfies the variance criteria. And certainly, better telecommunications enhances public safety, enhances, serves the public good. I'm betting pretty much everybody in the room has a cellphone. They've struggled with it at times, especially during the summer months when demand is greater in a place like Falmouth. So certainly, the increase in telecommunications and the increase in the public safety benefit of telecommunications does not derogate from the bylaw, but certainly provides reason to grant the variance. I, you know, like I said, I wasn't sure whether I needed a special permit, so we asked for it. But it's, this is, from a special permit perspective, quite easy. There's really no water, no sewer. It's an unmanned facility, so there's no traffic. There'll be about a month's worth of construction, and then somebody might come by once a month in a pickup truck to make sure that the fence is still intact. But all the electronics are remotely monitored. All the antennas can actually be tweaked if necessary remotely, so there's really no traffic or impact on the land or the neighborhood at all. And it certainly complies with all the other requirements of zoning bylaw with respect to setbacks and things like that. And as the board mentioned, the federal government is very involved in telecommunications infrastructure development. They pass laws that encourage this type of development. They, you know, they want to encourage multiple telecommunications companies, not just Verizon, but other telecommunications companies, to have the ability to build networks in places like Falmouth. And basically, what the law says is, you don't have to say yes, but you can't say no without sufficient reason. You can't say, "We don't like it." And when you look at this particular facility, the minimal visual impact, the industrial area that it surrounds, the existing power line easement, there's really no reason to say no. You know, it really doesn't have an impact on the neighborhood, doesn't have an impact on any of the traffic or anything like that that would have it. And so the, and there's been an immense amount of case law, both involving facilities on Cape Cod and throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the United States. Just trying to, again, encourage this without forcing people to say yes. So with that, I would respectfully request that the board grant the requested variance. If they think I need a special permit, grant that as well, so that we can move forward. We've already got our Cape Cod Commission approval after extensive review, and I understand we've got to get some fuel permits from the town, but those are usually quite ministerial, and we can get those. And we're, given the lack of winter on Cape Cod, we might be able to start building this as early as the first quarter of next year, so we'd just like to move forward as best we can.
True that. We still have summer here, don't we?
Yes, exactly. We do a lot of work in New Hampshire where we can't do anything in, after October, so it's difficult. But down here, it's a lot easier to build year-round.
Sounds good. Thank you. Questions from the board? Mark, you want to start off?
There's a significant lack of coverage at the lower end of Brick Hill Road and into West Falmouth that's actually been a public safety issue, people with cellphones unable to call ambulances. That's if the West Falmouth Fire Station's open, another problem. How much is this going to improve that?
Let me jump to that slide.
If any.
It pretty much provided, how do I do this? Provided coverage going down Brick Hill Road all the way to Route 28 to connect up with a shorter facility on Route 28 going towards the east side of Falmouth, and then also back towards 28. And then also down Gifford Street, connecting with sites down here. So this is really the area that's going to provide much better coverage. So I'll also tell the board, and you're probably aware, we have another site in process in North Falmouth, up by Old Silver Beach. And that, I came to you back in June, you referred to the Cape Cod Commission. We just got approved by the Cape Cod Commission last week, and we'll be coming back to the zoning board. Noreen can squeeze me in in December or January. I know you guys are incredibly busy. And that's going to kind of, you know, fill in gaps in 28 and farther north into North Falmouth by the Old Silver Beach neighborhood as well.
You kind of didn't answer my question.
You didn't. You left off West Falmouth.
There's a, what about West Falmouth, you know, and the neighborhood of Chappaquoyd and around the fire station, down the bottom of Brick Hill Road, I'm just not, 130-foot tower.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you this.
I mean, I'm sure you're aware of the areas in town that, what, cellphones drop off.
Yes.
And I have heard of people who have been unable to call ambulances on their cellphones and...
We are working as best we can. There are gaps all over Falmouth. There's gaps all over Cape Cod. That area is a more significant challenge because there aren't any large lots down that way. We're working on it, but we don't have a solution yet. The Cape Cod Commission has an immense amount of regulations that we need to comply with, and they're almost very challenging in denser, more residential neighborhoods. Like I said, we were able to find something in North Falmouth that was a large lot that we'll be in front of you guys next month on. But that west area of Falmouth, West Falmouth is just, we're working on it, but it's, we don't have a solution yet.
So, to put a number on it, zero improvement?
What's that?
To put a number on it, zero improvement in that problem area?
This is not going to provide much additional benefit to the area west of 28.
I don't think the one at the church is going to either.
Probably not. You know, anyone's got any suggestions?
I live right where we're talking about, so...
Right, I understand that. It's a, you've got to imagine how difficult it is in neighborhoods like that. We...
Hilli.
I'll also tell you, to stand here probably takes two years, given the amount of due diligence that we need to do, given the amount, you know, the Cape Cod Commission is both a lengthy and incredibly expensive process. They look at a lot of things hyper-critically in our mind. It kind of slows things down a little bit, and, but it's, as the Cape Cod Commission says, the cost of doing business on Cape Cod. So we're doing the best we can, but it's certainly a challenge.
Just for my own adification, I know a few people that actually are in this business, and when this was in its infancy, they used to use like small repeaters and church steeples and such. Is that still viable? Because I know it's a real problem there, and it's a public safety issue, heaped on top of another issue we have there, where the fire station...
If you look at this map that I have right here, the little black dots are what we call small cells, and they're existing facilities utilized by Verizon in dense areas to provide not so much capacity, coverage, but capacity issues. There are small cells, like for example, where we are right now. This is a very dense commercial area, not a lot of big lots. You're not going to build a 150-foot tower anywhere near downtown Falmouth. So there are a series of small cells that provide, provide a form of coverage, but it's really a capacity issue. Because, as you can imagine, during the summer months, just a very densely populated area with a high demand. The small cells aren't designed to cover large areas. They're designed to supplement existing networks. Like, for example, we're going to talk about North Falmouth next month, there's coverage in the parking lot of the Old Silver Beach beach, but, because there's a small cell right in the parking lot. But it doesn't provide coverage across the street or down the street, which is why we're proposing a tower for the entire neighborhood. Small cells are kind of like a Band-Aid on a much bigger problem, but a, and they're not designed to cover large areas, because they're way below the tree canopy. They're on, sometimes they're on telephone poles or rooftops or things like that. So it's a solution to a limited problem. But for that west area, we're still looking for something, a larger lot, that we can build a taller tower.
Well, there's certainly a need, and as I said, I know it's a public safety issue, especially if you're the one that's having a heart attack, but...
I wonder if they couldn't put one on top of the fire station?
That's what I was just thinking.
Yeah.
We can look at it. I can dog the fire chief. We've done other, I did one in Duro several years ago. I think I did one in Eastham several years ago. So fire stations are, are, those weren't in very...
Doable.
Yeah, they're doable, depending on the neighborhood surrounding it. That's, sometimes fire departments have...
Behind this fire station goes up a pretty steep hill.
Right.
Telegraph hill, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a lot of power up there, too. I just know it's, it's a serious issue, and, I mean, it's an inconvenience if it's just a cellphone call, but when it's an emergency call, it obviously has more weight.
Okay. Scott, you have anything?
Yeah. So on the 130-foot monopole, you have different providers that probably want to be at different heights. I thought, Noreen, when we approved the one up at Highfield, we had asked for Falmouth Police or Fire to potentially have access to the pole at some elevation. Is that something that you would provide to Public Health and Safety potentially through the Fire or Police Department to mount something that would not impede any of your, you know, you need to return on your investment?
The, I'll tell you, that's kind of a win-win for us, because the type of antennas that public safety uses are a lot different than the type of antennas that Verizon and other commercial carriers use. They're much lighter, they take up less space. So if you were to put a condition that we would accommodate the reasonable requirements, I use the word reasonable, for Police and Fire, we'd certainly do that.
Great. Thank you.
Frank?
Mr. Parisi, the comment from the building commissioner, he had no objection to this project, but I think he would like a plan showing the fall zone. If you could just submit one there. I don't think it's a requirement of the zoning board, but that's what he has asked for. That's the way I interpreted it anyways.
So I think on sheets C1 and C2 did pretty clearly depict...
Well, fine, as long as he's satisfied.
I thought we had. And again, I don't like to use the word fall zone, because it implies something that doesn't happen, but I think that the Cape Cod Commission imposes a 125%, which is unusually, you know, most towns do 100%. But, and so I think we provided that in the plans. I don't have a...
I just brought it up because it's in his comments, that's all.
And I think Noreen's right, it's there.
So now you have asked for a variance and also a special permit, and the special permit provision of the zoning bylaw is 240, Section 5.1C2. Now let me just back up. Our zoning bylaw says that if you look at the, if you look at the permitted uses, if it's not a permitted use, then it's a prohibited use. But Section 5, and it doesn't mention monopoles, by the way, but it mentions in 6.1B, it mentions TV and radio antennas. But under 245.1C2, this board may by special permit allow a prohibited use if it closely resembles and neighborhood-impact a by-right use or special permit use in the district. So if a television and radio antenna is a permitted use in the district, we have the authority to grant a special permit for a monopole under 5.1C2. But we'd like you to discuss how it closely resembles a permitted use in the district, so we can make a finding.
The zoning ordinance with respect to this zone says that radio and television antennas not exceeding 50 feet are a permitted use by right.
Right.
So it's just a function of the height.
That is.
Which is why I asked the height variance. In addition, there, there's another provision that says that radio and television antennas subject to, matched on the laws, 40A, Section 3, are permitted. And those are actually amateur, like ham radio-type antennas, which is a very similar use, they just broadcast at a different frequency than us. So I actually think you're, the, the tower that we have proposed at, in North Falmouth, clearly is a permit, it's in a residential zone, not an agricultural zone, but that's a permitted use subject to special permit. So that's all I need. I didn't need a dimensional variance there. So it's, I think your bylaw is a little...
But you're in an, it's, this is in an agricultural...
Yeah, this is in agricultural zone.
Which is a difference.
Right, I understand that. I think, quite frankly, I think your bylaw is confused.
We know that.
Because it's allowed...
No, no, it's well...
We know that very well.
It's allowed in a residential zone with a special permit. And in this case, anything under 50 feet is allowed in a special permit, but quite frankly, agricultural lots tend to be larger lots, and so lending itself more to this type of facility. So I would argue that it is a permitted use such as a special permit. I'll also note that the last time, and I think it was several years ago, this board had an identical application in an AgB zone, it granted a special permit. So I'm not sure if the bylaw changes subsequently that, but I don't really care.
Well, this board has the authority to grant a special permit, so long as the proposed use closely resembles one that's by right in the district, and I think you've kind of answered that.
Right, so a television antenna is permitted in the district.
Yeah.
Up to a certain height, so...
Then you would need a variance for the height.
Right.
To go up at 50 feet.
That's why I applied for the variance, and maybe you grant both a special permit for the use and then the height variance, just to bootstrap and suspenders. You know, it, you know, the Cape Cod Commission doesn't, they look at compliance with your zoning bylaw, but they look at things more holistically, and is it appropriate for this particular location?
Okay.
Tony?
Just out of curiosity, why is there never an effort to disguise these holes? I mean, yes, the photographs show that they kind of blend in in places like that, but when you're going to get into the North Falmouth area, you're not going to disguise 130 feet very well. But why, why don't you make an effort to disguise these holes?
Somebody once told me, in your position, "You can't put lipstick on a pig." And I took offense to that, but it's kind of sort of true. The more you try to disguise them, the more you call attention to them. I actually had a town out in Western Mass require me to make it look like a fake pine tree. And it can never look like a fake pine tree, like your artificial Christmas tree, because the branches can't go out too far, or else they start to wilt. So it really looks like a giant toilet bowl brush or a pipe cleaner. And I told them this, and I provided photo sims to this, and then we built it, and they said, "Take the branches off. That's the stupidest thing I've ever seen." And by then, we've already designed it, and we can't do it.
So the simple answer is, you can't disguise it.
You know, I can make it look like whatever, I can paint it pink.
No, no, no. It's a serious, it's a serious question. You're going to be asking for something coming up, not, not part of this discussion. So I'm asking the question now, so for thought process, and the answer is, you cannot disguise this to blend in. It is just going to be 130 feet.
Right.
And it's going to be ugly, and it's just going to be there.
130 feet, there.
Wherever it is.
I take offense to the word ugly. It's a joke. Beauty's in the eye of the holder. And when I drive around, I drive around for a living. I come to places like Cape Cod. I go to places where they have no coverage whatsoever, and I'm just driving, looking for a cell signal, so I can stop and call my wife. And I'm just driving, looking for a cell signal so I can stop and call my wife and call my office and all that. You know, I think the Cape Cod Commission, I'm actually talking to Cape Cod Commission about revising their regulations because they were designed to impede. And now everybody wants it. And, you know, and I can't build them fast enough. And yet, we're trying to hide them. It's kind of contrary to the mission. But to answer your question, the more we try, the worse it looks. And I can give you lots of examples. You know, I built 150-foot silo in Connecticut. And I'd hate to tell you what it looks like. It's a giant phallic symbol in the middle of Connecticut. It's just the stupidest thing you've ever seen because it's, you know, it's a monstrosity. So...
Let me just, Madam Chair, through you to our zoning administrator, what is our purview here? What are we even considering about this? I mean, if the FCC prohibits us from saying no without a valid reason, why are we even bothering hearing these things?
Because he still requires relief.
He still requires relief.
It's procedural, yeah.
It's simply procedural.
So, yeah, you're limited in saying no, but he still needs your permission to go forward.
Then we have no reason to say no.
Correct.
So why don't we just close it and say yes?
Well, I think you need to hear if there's any...
You know what? If we were in a public park or next to a public park or next to a historic resource or, you know, along the coast where there's scenic value, those are instances where you might have proper authority to say no. The one big case in Massachusetts was built on the top of a hill, and on one side of the hill was a daycare center, on the other side of the hill was an elementary school. And it was just like in the middle of the two. And that town was allowed to say no. In this particular case, run an 11-leaker lot, it's already used for outdoor storage, we're next to a power line easement that's not going away, so it limits your ability to say no. So I don't want to say you have to say yes, but the federal law says you can't say no without sufficient reason. And that's really, and Noreen's right, I still need to get the variance from you or the special permit to move forward. But the federal government is just trying to channel the discussion a little bit.
Thank you.
We've all grown up with power lines, and no one ever asked them to be pretty, did they?
Right.
Right? What's the maintenance plan?
These towers are, you know, someone comes by like once a month to check on it. The equipment is remotely monitored. It's remotely monitored for heat and smoke and things like that. We don't have instances like that. But really, the biggest issue we have is trees in the area falling on the fence. And we have a big issue with people trying to steal copper. And so just maintaining the integrity of the fence is our biggest concern. The towers themselves are designed so you can't climb it. The first 20 feet have no climbing ability at all. You'd have to bring at least a 20-foot ladder. And then there are specific climbing pegs, and only authorized people have the specific pegs for the climbing, so it's designed to be non-climbable. But so from a maintenance perspective, it's really just the integrity of the fence.
Okay, great. Any other questions up here before we go to the public? Anybody from the public? Come on up. We just need your name and address, please.
Also one corner, too.
Okay.
My name is Teresa Hogan, without the H. 500 Teeticket Highway. So you mentioned, Mr. Duffy, that the Fire Department wanted them to have a flammable storage box. I just want to know, what is that? And does every pole that goes up get one of those? You can give the brief answer.
There will be a generator on site. The generator will have a propane tank.
Want to come around just a moment?
There will be a generator on site that doesn't run constantly. It's like the third source of power. The first source of power is primary power. Second source of power will be backup batteries. And in the extent of a long-term power failure, there'll be a generator, and that generator requires fuel. And so we just got to get the fire chief to approve the design of the tank.
Bell set? Come on up.
Good evening. Kristen Gonzalez, 365 Brick Hill Road. Listening to Mr. Duffy, I understand there are some questions that I can't ask, so I'm looking just for some advice. Obviously, I have health implication questions, and I don't know who to address to. I'm a homeowner, I'm a mom, and I have some concerns about the tower. My other thing that I wanted to talk about was that it is, we are agriculturally zoned over there, and I did read, and it is prohibited in that area. As you said, you can ask for a variance. And then I did find it interesting that you had no viewpoints from where our residential area is, because I have pictures. So nobody took pictures from the Brick Hill Road side.
I have some pictures. We didn't see it along Brick Hill Road.
He's got to come, it's on TV.
I have some pictures of Brick Hill Road, I can show them, but we didn't see it along Brick Hill Road, other than right at the power line easement where you're looking at the power lines as well.
I took it right from my driveway, and I can see it.
With respect to health, the federal government just says that you can't make your decisions based on the perceived health effects. However, I can answer the question, and I think it's a good question. We're also concerned with health. This is a technology that we've been living with for over 100 years. In fact, one of the first radio communications was done on Cape Cod at Marconi Beach in Welfley, where I just built a tower three years ago, just off the beach by the bike path. It's the same type of technology that we've been using throughout all of Falmouth on six other sites in Falmouth, and then through the small cell technology at probably another 20 locations throughout Falmouth. Your zoning bylaw actually requires us to rule out existing structures like church steeples. So if there was a church steeple in the area, and I've done many church steeples on Cape Cod along Route 6A. I'll tell you, I go to church in Rhode Island that has 150-foot steeple, and we were able to put two antennas in, two sets of antennas, two different telecommunications companies in that, without any impact on the churchgoers. There's an elementary school, a church elementary school right next door. So it's a technology, there's Wi-Fi in this building right now. There's, you know, people have baby monitors to monitor their child in their crib. It's the same technology, just different frequency bands. And we've been living with it very safely and successfully for over 100 years.
Thank you. Did you get your questions answered?
What I say is not going to matter, unfortunately.
Well, as I mentioned, it's, the Federal Communication Commission has reserved exclusive jurisdiction over those issues, and I can't tell you how to get in touch with them because I never have.
Okay.
So are you maintaining to us that there's no danger from EMF?
I, I'm a lawyer. All I know is that...
It's going to be like a yes or no.
The FCC has applicable, the FCC has jurisdiction over this. They've set applicable exposure limits, and as long as the equipment is operating in its required frequencies, which it's very heavily regulated, and at the limited power it puts, it's well under applicable FCC regulations with respect to that.
That really wasn't my question.
I drive around for a living, and I talk on my cellphone eight hours a day. I believe it's safe. I'm not an authority. I'm just...
I absolutely believe there is, but I mean, it's not that we can do anything about it. There's certainly an increased amount of brain cancers in children, and I actually wear a Schengen Gaia pendant, and I sleep so much better. And I just think it's another case where the government's dropped the ball. And Emerson said in the beginning of the 20th century, he said, like Emerson Electric, he said that he absolutely noticed that it was making the population stupider. I mean, that's not an exact quote, but anyway, I just will note your non-answer.
Do you have any other questions, Mia?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? So I think we, any other further questions?
No.
I guess I can just help the board. I've been working on cell towers for probably not quite as long as Mr. Parisi, but over 20 years. And I will tell you, in the other communities, we face the same issues, same questions about health issues. And the federal government has reserved exclusive authority to determine whether there's a health issue or not. So while I understand that people are concerned, and we all need to be concerned about our environment, what they're primarily telling you is that the area where you would face the greatest concern is if you are right up against one of those antennas for some period of time. So that's why those areas are heavily fenced and regulated, and you can't get up there because they don't want people right next to the antenna.
But that's heavy exposure. Not that we can do anything about it, but I mean, I just have to be honest with you. I trust the FCC about as much as I trust the FBI and the CDC.
But they've essentially maintained that it's their jurisdiction.
Oh, absolutely, it is.
So directed.
Got to love them. Never holds back. That's why we love them. Anyway, we're all set up here?
Yes.
You going to help me out, Mark?
I have motion to close.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion up here? All those in favor of closing? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Motion to approve of conditions, variances, whatever else Frank would have to put together on this one.
Yeah, Noreen, help us through the, should we do special permit?
We're going to do special permit and a variance of the special permit.
I think it makes best sense just to give them relief that covers everything.
Yes.
And that way, there's not a problem.
Okay.
E, all of the above.
So you've made a motion for a special permit with a variance, and I'll second it. So we have a motion. Now we have to do findings.
Well, this is difficult because we haven't done one of these before, at least I haven't in a long time.
I'm glad to help you.
You want Noreen to do it?
No, we'll give it a try here. It's in an agb district. I think what you'll do is you'll draft the decision, and then we'll all review it for accuracy. Correct?
If you like.
Yeah, all right. So they've asked for a special permit and/or a variance citing Sections 240, 6.1(b) of the Falmouth zoning bylaw for 130-foot monopole with a fenced compound at 737 Gifford Street in Falmouth. Current use of the property is an outdoor self-storage facility. The fenced compound will be 50 feet by 70 feet. The site of the lot is 11.6 acres. Street frontage is 423 feet. Both comply with the zoning bylaw. Gifford Street is a public right-of-way. There was a balloon test for visibility demonstration conducted in April of 2024. Now, Section 240, 6.1(b) of the Falmouth zoning bylaw provides that in an agricultural district, a TV/radio antenna in excess of 50 feet requires a special permit from the ZBA. Now, there's a further section to be read in conjunction with that, Section 245.1(c)(2) of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, which says that the zoning board of appeals has the authority to grant a special permit for a prohibited use if the use closely resembles in the neighborhood, its impact in the neighborhood, a by right or a special permit use in the district. And then there is a provision for a variance, which we'll get into later.
So we're going under 6.1(b) though, right?
6.1(b). So under 6.1(b), we grant a special permit citing our authority under Section 245.1(c)(2) to grant a special permit for a 130-foot telecommunications monopole, which we find to be closely resembling a television or radio antenna in its impact on the neighborhood. That's the authority for granting the special permit. Now, they need further, with a special permit, we find that the site, as required by Section 240, 12.1e, we find that the site is adequate for the proposed use. The site is suitable for the proposed use. There's no impact on traffic flow and safety, no impact on neighborhood visual characters' views of this. There's no issues with sewage disposal, there's adequate utilities, and there's no impact on affordable housing. The planning board has issued a site plan review with approval. Now, we also make the following findings. That the 130-foot monopole will enhance telecommunications service in town. It will be unmanned, there'll be no impact on traffic. There's a power line easement adjacent to the property which prevents further useful development. The 130 feet is necessary for adequate area coverage and to comply with federal regulations. Now, the variance, we're granting a dimensional variance to allow the monopole in excess of 50 feet to the height of 130 feet. We can make the finding that there are special circumstances relating to this property, particularly the topography, its location, and its proximity to the utility easement, which justifies an easement. Because of these conditions greatly generally affect this particular parcel and not the zoning district, that a literal enforcement would create a hardship, financial or otherwise. And the variance may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or substantially derogating from the intent and purposes of the Falmouth zoning bylaw. So therefore, we grant the special permit and the requested variance.
That was a lot. So those are our findings. Any findings, Noreen?
The property is going to be unmanned, periodic maintenance visits, no water sewer.
Fenced.
Yeah, access off Gifford. They are willing to provide for co-location or access by the town, emergency 911, opportunity for four carriers on the pole, signage and fencing to comply with local, state, and federal regulations. There was no FAA-required review. Ground-based equipment cabinets. We've got concrete pad, 45-by-60-foot fenced compound, ice bridge from pole to equipment cabinets, FCC licensed, yeah, okay. The existing topography is 35 feet, so it's a fairly level lot. Access is via 15-foot wide access easement over an existing driveway. They're going to have a six-foot tall chain-link fence compound with crushed stone. Verizon's proposing a propane storage tank. They will require Fire Department approval.
I think that's good for findings. And the flame box with the Fire Department, too, right? And the flame box.
Condition.
Oh, in a condition, yeah. So now, conditions. There we go. Flame box. Yeah, per plan.
For any board comments?
Yeah.
As Noreen mentioned, potential fire and safety, 911, as long as it doesn't impede business plan.
Right.
For a donor, for Frank, yes.
Any other conditions down there?
I think the only other one that seems to be a regional issue are the ospreys. They seem to be very attracted to the towers. So for all of our towers, we have osprey prohibition. So if there's any nesting that occurs during the season, we require that the nests not be disturbed until the season's over.
I will tell you, ospreys are the bane of our existence. There's a lot of federal regulation that overrides what the town does, but they're far more stringent than what you would impose. And the techs show up, they see an osprey, and they leave. It's a problem. And you're right, it's...
They come back later for fried eggs.
Exactly.
I think we're all set, right? So now we're going to vote to approve the special permit and the variance. And the variance, all in one vote.
Yes.
Everybody all set with that? One vote, including special permit and...
Now, do you want to take a date for a review or do you want me to just send it out to everybody for any comments?
I think that's fine that way, don't you?
Yeah, we covered everything, I think.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
You're so used to doing these, Norine. We're sure it'll be perfect.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Get lucky with the osprey.
Really.
Chair recommending a five-minute stretch?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. All right, now we have zero.
We'll have to hit that thing again.
Broken Bow.
Hey, this is, wait, no, we gotta...
First, we're gonna have Scott.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the Falmouth zoning board of appeals has the grounds to declare that a denial or approval of conditions of the application is consistent with local needs as defined in general laws, Chapter 40b, Sections 20 through 23, and 760 CMR 56.031a and 3a because the town's subsidized housing inventory exceeds 10%. And further, under 760 CMR 56.031b and 4, for municipal compliance with its approved housing production plan. And to provide the requisite 15-day written notice following tonight's hearing to the applicant and to the executive office of housing and livable communities. This is the motion.
So moved. Once the motion is moved, the chair shall offer the applicant the opportunity to proceed. Nick, are you gonna proceed?
I am gonna proceed, yes. Thank you.
Okay.
My name is...
Sharpened for you.
Pardon me?
And we have our teeth sharpened for you.
No.
This is application 100 of the year 2024, Broken Bow Residences LLC. They've applied to the Falmouth zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Chapter 40b of the Massachusetts general laws to conduct 16 units throughout four duplex buildings and one multi-unit building containing eight units. Four units will be affordable. The subject property is Broken Bow Lane in East Falmouth. There's no number for the property. So we refer to it in our record as Zero Broken Bow Lane. The property is, Broken Bow Residences is a limited dividend organization. This is an application under Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40b. There is Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency site approval letter issued to the town of Falmouth on September 16, 2024, which authorizes this board to go ahead and hear a comprehensive permit application. The property lies in two zoning districts. It's partially in an agricultural B zoning district, and it's partially in a general residence zoning district. The property is 69,544 square feet in a district that currently requires, well, the general residence minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. The AGB or Agricultural B zoning district, the minimum is 40,000 square feet. The lot is larger than both. The current use of the property is vacant land, so there's no reported use of the property. The property has 317.5 feet of frontage on Broken Bow Lane, and the minimum requirement is 100 feet. Broken Bow Lane is a private right-of-way. We have a number of comments. The engineering department has sent us a referral with approximately 17 pages of comments, which I won't go through, but I expect Mr. Maroni will address them in his presentation. They note that there will be private trash pickup and recycling pickup. There'll be private snow removal, this is not to be a townway. The Board of Health says that the proposed septic system appears to be suitable at this time. We also have information from the wastewater department that this site may be sewed as early as 2027. Fire department has no comment. The assessors have no comment. The planning board notes that they do not like the architectural features of the proposed buildings. They are concerned about the apparent lack of tenant storage facilities, and they note that the market rate rent, the rent for market rate units appears high. As I said, this is in the Great Pond Sewer Phase 1. And that's comments to get started.
Go ahead, Nick.
For the record, I'm Nick Marioni, representing the owner of this project. And I won't repeat what Frank had to say. He did a very good job of outlining the general parameters of the project, but I'll get into some specifics here. So this plan here lays out the layout of the buildings. This is the eight-unit studio building, duplex, two-bedroom units. I'm sorry, that's a three-bedroom unit building, two-bedroom, and two bedrooms in those buildings. We have two points of access, one off Broken Bow Lane in this area and one off Broken Bow Lane in that area. The dumpster, which will be fenced in, will be in this location. This is the leaching field, which will be covered with, it'll be landscaped when it's finished. We have adequate parking. We meet the requirements for parking. And I'm gonna go into the drainage next.
Nick, could you just make a statement about what's required for parking and what you have so the people here in the room at home better understand?
So the studio units require one and a half spaces per unit, and the two- and three-bedroom units require two spaces per unit. So the parking requirements, the 28 spaces, we're showing 32. We have four handicap spaces that will be spread throughout the project. They're shown on here already. I'm sorry, three handicap spaces, what we're showing.
So four guest spots for the entire development?
Yes. A lot of people think the one and a half spaces for a studio unit is strong, so... This is the drainage plan and utility plan. The project drains presently towards the leaching, the catch basin, the basin here. We also have, so we're gonna continue to grade it that way so that the flow will be towards the detention basin. And there's a catch basin at this point to pick up what doesn't flow to that. Manholes and underground, the whole system is underground except when we get down here. Then it flows out to the state property, which is, the state owns this piece here that goes out to Route 28. And it's currently a drainage for them, for Route 28. And because we already drain there, we're allowed to continue to drain there. The mailbox location will be right here at the entrance to the project. This is a garage that the owners will use for maintenance materials and for storage for studio units that exceed the studio storage space on the end of the building. There'll also be a laundry room in the end of that building. The two- and three-bedroom units have their own laundries and have full basements for storage. This is a perspective plan of the three-bedroom unit to give you the, so you can see the second floor where the third bedroom is. There's two bedrooms on the first floor, and the third bedroom's on the second floor. There's only one building like this.
Where's the storage in that one?
I'm sorry?
Where's the storage for the three bedrooms?
In the basement. This is the two-bedroom building, which is basically the same building with, out the second floor. So it's just two bedrooms on one floor. They also have basements. And the studio building has eight units, four on each floor. This is a storage building off the end, storage for storage units. The first four units all have direct access, handicap, wheelchair access to them. And that building is approximately the size of the soba house that's across the street. Looks like a big colonial. So I will ask the board if they have any questions at this point, and I'll address them.
That's the entire presentation?
Gives the outline of what we need. What else? We just ask the questions. I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay. Mark?
Have you seen the, these pictures submitted by Ms. Parks?
I have, yes.
And I do know Ms. Parks and Ms. Parks, and I recall years ago when she purchased this house, she mentioned this issue. Granted, I mean, you don't own the road, but it certainly appears from the picture that this issue involves your property. Do you have any plans to mitigate this or deal with this?
It's an existing condition that I'm aware of. I've spoken with the owners, and they've authorized me to talk to the engineers to see if there's any way we can pick up some of that and move it with our drainage.
So it's gonna come onto your property? Now, in this picture where that actual puddle is, that's your property right there, is it not?
No, I don't, I think most of what you're looking at is right in here in this corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That certainly appears, and then you have notations there of, you know, possible encroachments. So, I mean, just looking at this, it certainly appears that this is your problem as well. So you really don't have any, you're gonna look into it so far?
Yeah, if there's any way we can incorporate that in our drainage, we're gonna do what we can.
It's certainly gonna be, and I don't know, you know, what kind of a storm caused this. And to be honest with you, you know, I don't go down there much, and not many people do, but it certainly, certainly seems to be... Yeah. And you'll have ample opportunity to come up and speak. I don't know when, that's up to the chair. But like I said, I know that this issue has existed for 10 years anyway, or close to it.
I'm sure.
And I think, you know, if you intend to develop this, I mean, you do front on it, and it's certainly incumbent on you to do at least something about it, not...
And we plan to. I just can't answer it specifically because since it came up a couple of weeks ago in a site meeting that we had, I spoke to the engineers, and they said they'd have to recalculate the drainage because it's gonna add more drainage to our basin.
But, I mean, it's so obvious, and I'm sure you didn't just buy this property last week. I'm just, it seems that there's no real indication here. I mean, it seems that it should have been part of your planning already, is all I'm stating. And I'm certainly looking for you to at least include something. And that's that, and we, I don't know what the rents are. The planning board certainly seems to think they're high. And I'm not a big fan of these dormitory-style buildings. But, you know, that's all I'll say at the moment.
Yeah, I'm not either, because I have a bigger family. But there's a lot of people in need of them, and the housing committee and the Affordable Housing Fund have said, "Hooray, we need these." So...
Well, they're them and we're us.
I understand. That's why we incorporate them, those, because there was a need for them. But yes, we will look into that drainage thing, and I'll have an answer next time I come back here.
Like I said, we're at our 10%.
Yes.
For Sharper.
I understand.
That's all I have for now.
Go ahead, Scott.
Norine, question. In looking at the comments from the boards, different boards around town, they recommended sending the project to a peer review engineer. So I guess we have to kick that review process off.
Right. Well, I think as part of that, certainly the board needs to consider what action you're gonna take on this case or not. And that was what prompted your motion that you started the meeting with.
Right.
So I guess what I would recommend is that the board consider what they want to do. And if you are gonna move forward and hear this, then what engineering's telling you is that they will need peer engineering and including stormwater review.
Right. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I don't have any other questions at this point.
Frank?
I apologize. I forgot to mention that we do have a referral from the housing coordinator, who sent us about a two-page referral. And the substance is that she acknowledges that the town needs rental units, particularly for families. So that's in the record. Couple of things. I went out and I did a site visit the other day. And a couple of, I noticed that the Broken Bow Lane, as it passes this particular property, is in pretty rough shape. There's a hole where it meets Route 28, which is, it's almost like a barrier. You have to drive around it. And then, when you get to the first curve and the road curves to the left, there's a pretty rough stretch of pavement. And then all this bad pavement is right by, is actually, it butts the property that you own. I'm wondering if you and your client would consider making some improvements, or at least repairs, to Broken Bow Lane as it passes your property and it provides the entrance to this subdivision?
The owners have already told me that they would be doing some repairs to Broken Bow Lane, yes.
I think it's necessary because you're gonna add 28 cars.
Yeah.
And it's really unfair to come in on a private road, add a lot of traffic, and not assume some responsibility for the condition of the road.
We agree.
Okay. That's it.
All set?
Well, here we are again, same architecture as the other ones. Same Motel 6 look. And I understand what you mentioned before with regard to the need for studios. But to continue to repeat the same level of architecture in what I consider to be relatively poor architecture, I don't think it's appropriate, especially since we've reached our 10% level, to allow this sort of thing to continue. I understand the town needs these things, but is this the right place for it, on the right conditions? But one of the things you've asked for, this is in the coastal pond of LA District, and you know how concerned I've been. I think this board's been about the coastal pond of LA District. I also recognize that this is an area to be sewed at some point in time. And I have to ask the question before I get into the nitrogen load. But you're asking for this waiver, yet the board hasn't waived it. You haven't provided any documentation as to the level of nitrogen load that this project will create. And you're required to do so so long as this board has not waived coastal pond of LA District 7.2B. So have you done any calculations that determines the new nitrogen load to the coastal pond of LA District as required by 7.2B?
We haven't done them yet, but we will do them. And just to take you to next week, which you requested, we'll have for next week too, so...
So you will provide those?
We will provide them.
Is there any evidence that you have right now that the new sewer line will be connected to your project? For instance, you have stated that you're going to put a sewer line hub, I think it is, within 50 feet off Broken Bow. And it says, "We designed our site with a sewer manhole approximately 50 feet off Broken Bow to allow for easy connection," and you use the word "should," which is not "will," "should sewer become available in the future." So I suspect even you are not sure when a sewer line would be going down there. And what happens between, if this board should approve this, what happens to the coastal pond of LA District before a sewer line comes in?
I'm not sure anybody really knows when sewer's coming in. I'm not sure anybody really knows when sewer's coming in. It's been referred that it's coming around 2027.
Yes.
When we had a site visit with the mass housing people and the various boards in the town, the Board of Health suggested that somewhere in this area would be a manhole that would pick up that sewage, and we've allowed, the tanks are over here, we've allowed ourselves the ability to connect to it very easily should it come to that spot. If it doesn't, we have a space reserved for the denitrification area. So we're anticipating we're going to get sewer sooner than I thought. I thought it was going to be-
In fact, in fact, I have something here that says that the project is likely to be completed in 2027, but there's a, there is a, it's contingent on some other matters. I think you probably were, that if you've spoken to the department on that?
No, I have not talked to the sewer department, I've talked to the Board of Health.
All right, so there are some contingent issues as to when this sewer line will go in, and I believe that has to go back to the state, there's some issues on this whole thing. So the answer is, we don't know when the sewer line's going to go in, we don't know you're going to supply this, we don't know what the effect of added nitrogen will be to the coastal part of the district, and that is a, we keep approving these things and it's a very, very serious situation in town, you can see the planning that's going on about the watershed areas. So if you're going to come back next week, if you're not going to decide to take this project off the table, which, as speaking as one member, I would dearly love to see you do, I just don't think we need this right now. I think we need to concentrate on LIPS, those projects approved by the select board, those projects that voluntarily put in IA systems, and I think that this is just not the time for this project, especially at this point in time. That, I'm only speaking as one member, but the architecture is the same old architecture you've seen with other projects do, and the housing is, is quite unique and different. I think that people that need affordable housing should have quality of place, and I don't think that your architecture provides that. It's the same plan over and over again, I know they're cheap to build, but if I could convince this board to deny this, I would do so. I have no more questions.
May I redress what you just said? I totally disagree with you on the design of the buildings, I think the design is fine and the people live inside the units, the inside of the units are very good, and the, as for the sewer, I'm sorry, I was a little distracted by one of the board members shaking their head and distracting me with that, so we're keeping an open mind and listening to what I have to say. But the nitrogen loading is, the units, we need affordable units. Why you think this, we don't need this at this time, I think is something I don't understand.
This is four units, four affordable, affordable units.
Four affordable units, yes.
It's all we're getting.
You get credit for all of them, but you get four affordable units, and if we can make-
We don't need the credit anymore.
I'm sorry?
We don't really need the credit anymore.
I, I just, I would like to hear the rest of what you were going to say about the architecture, because the architecture is, has been with your other projects, with this project, it is, I think, totally inappropriate.
Why? I don't understand why you think they're inappropriate.
Because it, it does not fit well. When you look at some of the other projects that have come in here and the designs they've used, you could easily do that, you just keep recycling the same plan over and over again, and I understand that's out of the expense issue, quote.
Not just expenses, function, it works. The unit works.
Yeah, but people need to have a place where they can come home to, now you just talked about, when I talked about pride of place, you said, "Well, people are going to come home and live in the, live inside of these things," right? And I understand the need for it, but I know from someone who's developed property, you can do a lot better job on the outside of these buildings. You don't need to do Motel 6s in this community, it's just inappropriate, and now that we're at 10%, I don't understand why we would even consider this.
I don't understand your Motel 6 comment.
Well, it looks like a Motel 6.
It is not a Motel 6, it's an eight-unit studio building.
Do you want to just put the elevation back up so everybody knows what we're speaking to, please? Don't worry, we're all on the same page, we're not on the same page. This is pretty landscaping.
That's a Motel 6?
That's a Motel 6.
I like it to me. But I, I, look, I'm just one board member, and I know we're going to get into a debate now, and I don't think that's appropriate, I know the chair won't like that, I would love to have the ability to debate you on these things, but it's not appropriate to do so here. In my opinion, that's a Motel 6, and I have to leave it at that.
Mark, go ahead.
You mentioned that the sewer's going through, which, yes, it is, you also mentioned that you haven't speak, spoken with the wastewater department, and I'm a little confused here because I thought all the sewer-ing was south of 28, and this is north of 28. So there's some confusion, and I think that this and a few other issues, you seem to have not done as much homework as I would have liked. The fact that you haven't spoken with the wastewater superintendent and I, and I may be completely wrong, but it's my understanding that all the intention, intended sewer is south of 28, and again, I state this is north of 28, and for-
That's Amy's letter, Mark.
It's, it's north.
She says it's going to start in '25 and be completed by '27.
But it's contingent.
Yeah, ballpark.
Yeah, but that's the T-ticket path area, it's in the watershed, so it's in Phase 1 of the, I, I, like I said, I, I thought I could be wrong.
That just came, yeah, this afternoon.
Well, I think that's the-
You can keep that.
Yeah, the plan has changed from what I knew, who was aware of, but if she says so, I mean, she's the boss.
Any other questions up here?
No, I, I, I must say that I, I don't disagree with some of the things that Tony has stated, and I mean, we've given a, we've been given a, a bigger hammer to wield, and I know you know I'm not against using it.
I think we have the folks here, we can hear a lot from them, and I think we get a lot of guidance as soon as we can hear from the public.
You guys ready?
Oh, yeah.
Let's go public. Whoever wants to come up, we just need you to name an address, please.
My name's Paul Young, I live on 48 Homestead Lane, I've been there 60 years. To Mr. Duffy's question, there's no address, it's a watershed. I don't know how many times it's flooded since the storms. It comes from Great Bay through Perch Pond under 28, the drain pipe. Now, if your client wants to pay for flood insurance for these people and the damage when it floods, that's fine, but, you know, I don't understand why a permit should be allowed in a watershed, which floods.
Where does the floodwater come from? Is it rain or?
No, storms.
Well, that's-
Storm surge, it goes from Great Bay through Perch Pond, and there's a pipe underneath 28 that goes for the runoff. I've been there 60 years, I've seen many floods.
I can hear what you're pointing to, I just want to know what you're referring to, that's all.
Yeah, and if you go, look under 28, you'll see the drain pipe, because I used to play there as a kid and go underneath, you know, through it.
So it, it actually surges during a storm up through?
Yeah, it's been flooded there for a few times.
That would, because you know what the mouth of Perch Pond has turned into.
Yeah.
I mean, you can go down there and the fisher laugh, you know, and it's-
No, but it has gone through Great Bay, you know.
It's actually disgraceful, but, you know, and that's where the next sewer-
Yeah, and if you're going to talk about sewer, and it floods, you know.
Well, that goes into something else, I mean-
Yeah, well, that's what I'm, well, that's what I'm saying. I've seen it, I've been there years, I've seen it, you know, flood on certain storms, it's not all the time.
And there's also a, I might be getting off-
And they got a drainage problem too, with these people.
Well, there's, I, I know of numerous houses in the newly sewered areas, and, and what happens is when they dig the road up to put the big pipe in and they fill it with the crushed stone, it, it literally turns into a retention basin for all the storm water, and then who happens to be unlucky enough to be hitched up to the sewer at the lowest point, their, their basements are flooding out like-
But-
I mean, you can see some of these houses, there's one on Sycamore, Mare Vista, and they have a sign, sump pump or whatever, because it, and there's another one on Louisiana Avenue, and I've brought this to the attention of-
So I, you know, I don't-
But that's really surprising to me, and I have an engineering background, that the surge is actually going up through there, but that does explain-
Like Bob, Bob was bad.
The condition of, of the mouth of, of Perch Pond and-
Yeah, because you see the surge in the waters, like, look at Falmouth Harbor, the pipe goes under the, under, towards Morse Pond.
Yeah.
You see the floods there on Main Street. So I'm just, I'm just bringing that to your attention, that there's a problem there, and if you're going to build this, and if they want to pay for the damage and flood insurance for these people.
Well, I'm familiar with a woman who spent $50,000 for five sump pumps in her basement, and before the sewer would end, it was dry for 50 years, and the town hasn't actually dealt with it, and I, I'm-
No, but I'm just bringing this to light.
Yeah, you're alerting me to something I wasn't aware of.
Yeah, you know.
I like to know everything plus.
You know, it's not an area, yeah, like you said, it looks like Motel 6, but I'm just saying, it's not an area for, for buildable.
Yeah, and I mean, with, with Ms. Parks' photos here, and then, you know, the potential to add to this issue, but, I mean, they have engineers and we're going to have a peer engineer, so some of this is going to be answered, but-
Now, if you block off that, now you're going to deal with Perch Pond and T-ticket path to flood.
They're not going to be allowed to, because it's the state's already using it as what appears to be an in, okay, I'm, I'm not going to go on any-
Yeah, but I just want to let you know that it does flood.
Good information, thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, name an address, please.
Peter Freel, 82 Broken Bow. One of my major concerns is also, that I haven't heard brought up yet, is that this lot is really only slated for one home. Apparently since you have the 40, you know, the four affordable units, you can put five properties on the lot that is only slated for one home. Also, the increased traffic, you know, right across the street, there's already a overpopulated sober home that has an abundance of cars already, so I think, you know, adding another 28 spots with only four visitors, you know, that's another concern for additional guests just parking along the side of the road, and those are our, those are my main concerns.
Sir?
Yeah?
You mentioned the sober home, where is that relation, you said across the street, what, where do you think you mean?
The big white one.
The big white?
Yeah.
Yeah, number 29, so when you take the turn, I don't know if we can put the map back up.
It's the big white one right where you had to stop before the hole.
All right. He just didn't say where it was.
So the sober home-
Right there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, all right. And there's no parking for the sober, the sober home has parking in the rear most of the time until recently, until they just actually put a bunch of dirt in the, in this area right here.
I saw that.
What they've done is, most of the time, there's cars just parked there from the sober home, until the builder actually put up dirt and boulders to prevent them from parking in that spot.
That's why the, that's why that big pile of dirt's there?
Ah, there's boulders there now, yeah, that kind of, yes, yes, yeah.
Wow.
Did that negatively affect the water issue?
The water's always an issue, so it's, I mean, as soon as it, as soon as it rains, it all piles there anyway. You know, the road, like you said, as soon as you turn in, you know, this, I yell at my son every single day, because you pull in that, not to mention that there's a big crevice there, but there's also a lip, so as soon as you, you've got to go 2 miles an hour over that lip, if you go 5 miles an hour, your car bumps and smashes the ground, my kid bumped his bumper off a couple, you know, that's just the road itself, but, you know, there's the big hole there, and then there's the big hole on the corner right by where their other entrance is slated to be, so.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is Barry Alves, we own the abutting property on the east side of Broken Bow, 540 and 544. I took down some notes and I kind of drove the property a little bit and drove Route 28. Now, this is the last 317 feet of wooded property after Oxbow Road to the Village Green as well, so everything is built on now, and more of these affordable housing are starting to creep up to the street line, they used to be set really far back. So my big concerns are, I grew up playing in those woods, mud, water, all the runoff from Homestead Lane comes down, all the runoff from Broken Bow comes down, it's, it's basically a flood plain, really, in essence. Again, I'll go to the, the way they've laid out, the, the plan of the property for that sized piece of land is just a lot of excessive impact for the area, a lot of, you know, there's kids that ride their bikes up and down the street, they're still going to T-ticket school. I think it's dangerous. We've had affordable housing, we've seen people just stack people in a one-bedroom, which means it's not just one car, so that we, people parked up and down Broken Bow outside of the complex, which will impact the residents of Broken Bow. So I think it's very misplaced, I think that you'll have water issues forever in that spot, there's constant runoff there, and I just think it's a bad spot to put affordable housing, especially a minute amount of it, it's just basically a builder enveloping it as affordable housing to get retail units in a place they really shouldn't be. So that's my thought.
Sounds like it's wetland to me.
It is, it's very wet, year-round, you can walk in there and you come out with mud on your shoes and your ankle deep in the mud. I've been doing it since I was three years old to maybe 14, 15 years old, so it's always been muddy there. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I think there's a bunch of them here.
Okay. We need all the information we can get.
Hi, my name is Walter Burek, and I live at 45 Homestead Lane, which is zero on Broken Bow Lane. My fence is right on the zero line, and am I going to have all these buildings in front of me? My, I'm going to be in shade most of the day because of the buildings that are up in front of me. There's that water runoff, or water, whatever it's called, is there, my, the back of my house and that watershed is right there, so I don't know what's going to be going on here, but when you have a disaster, if that floods, it's going to flood my property, I have my suits successful back there, my Title V is back there, and again, as the other people said, who's going to pay for, who's going to pay for the flood insurance on that property? So, there's some other people here, we call share, the zero line on Broken Bow Lane.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Constantine Castleberry. We're in number 41, we've been there 41 years. That's nothing but a single-lane road oversized going in and out of there, it's never been a two-lane road, you meet a truck, you go off the road, or he'll run you off the road, and it's mainly getting on to 28 is going to be the problem with any more housing that's built in that area. He's already put 11 brand-new homes down at the end. He's already put 11 brand-new homes down at the end, but they still gotta come out to 28 to get off. So that's, my wife and I wait sometimes three or four minutes to make a left turn coming out of there, because everybody's coming into town from Mashpee, Hyannis, et cetera, all the way down. So it's, it's only gotten worse over the years, as everybody knows what the traffic situation is in Falmouth. And I know we can end up with the same situation with that same thing that all the other ones over on the other side of the Alves property, where they put in those monster eight-unit houses. There's at least six to eight of those back there, and they use the same road to get in and out of as well. So it's, it's a monstrous traffic situation. And that's the one thing we're concerned with, and we were under the impression that there's only gonna be four or five one-family units in that area, not 26. So I don't know where those people would park their cars. Probably half of them need motorcycles, there's bicycles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Grossman, 504 T-Ticket Highway. I'm in the condominiums above this project. I agree with everything that everyone has said here, Anthony in particular. The design that is up here is absolutely atrocious for that area. I'm up high. This is down in a gully, basically, but they're trying to build these totally inappropriate homes with not enough space, not enough parking. To me, it's a quality-of-life issue for people that are living here now on Homestead and Oxbow and us in the condos up there on T-Ticket Highway. It is truly a quality-of-life issue for all of us, and I think the design is very inappropriate. The Motel Six is a good way to put it. The homes themselves, if we're gonna build something, build something with some charm and some quality. Someone stated that, I see this gentleman, that, well, you live inside your house. Well, you pull up to your house, too, and what's your sense of pride? And how do you feel when you're coming home? And how is your home, your so-called new home, affecting all of your neighbors who have been here for so many years? So we, on the condos on T-Ticket Highway, are totally against this project. We feel it's totally inappropriate. It's too much in too small a space. Someone mentioned the green space left in this town is so minor, and this was one of our, our little gems that, you know, had its problems, but it also gave a lot to the, to the little town there where we are. So I just wanted to express my thoughts on that very strongly.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Patricia Santal from 33 Homestead Lane, and I am 100% opposed. I went to the meeting and I went with an open mind. My mind changed when they told me it was a residential area on a one-house lot, and they're gonna put 16 units in that one lot. And I started to think about the people that live there. Because I live on Homestead Lane, and I've been living with the sober house that they have lived with, it's not fun. I called the police 'cause I thought somebody was partying in my backyard. The police came and they told me, no, it's not, it's not in your backyard. It's over there. Every summer, they had to contend with that problem from this, from that house. It's, it was, started out as a single home. It's now a four-story with kitchens on the fourth floor for the sober house. That neighborhood is just inundated with one problem after another. They, the man that wants to build this just built the 11 houses. He had the good sense to put one house on a lot. Now he's taken one lot, and he wants to put 16 units on that one lot. It's just wrong. It's wrong. It's a rape of the land, and everybody knows that density is just not a good thing. And I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, Nick.
I'd like to address some of the concerns by the abbotters and the board. Somebody mentioned about you liking lip projects better than, you wished that we had done a lip on it, they'd gone through the board of selection. Really, the only difference between a lip and what we're doing is, on a lip, you deal with, whatever they call themselves now, DHCD. There's, they changed their name recently. And on what we're doing, we deal with Mass Housing Finance Agency, which is much easier to deal with for us, much easier to deal with for 40B projects. I, I don't agree on the design, but I'm willing to work on the designs to see if I can come up with something more palatable to the board. We'll definitely look into the drainage issue, the condition of the road, and I will get the nitrogen loading calcs. And I will meet with Amy Lowell and the engineers and try and get a more definitive answer on the sewer line. If it's coming to 27, and our project's not gonna be finished till 26, it's, may make a difference if they can tell us zero in on that date that it's gonna be there, the sewer. So having said that, I'd like, and the peer review, typically on the opening of a public hearing, we make a presentation, the board asks questions, the neighbors are heard, those concerns get incorporated in the plan, a peer review is selected, and we proceed from there. So for us to do a lot of this stuff without hearing these comments first, I mean, the comment that we weren't, you know, totally prepared for this, this is how they usually go. And that's, that's the way we came prepared for it, to hear what the comments were and incorporate them in the plans as we move forward with the peer review person and our own engineers. So I'd like the board to consider this going forward. I think it's a valuable asset to the town. It's 16 units. Yes, only four of them are affordable. Perhaps we could look into making some more of them affordable through the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. But the more costs we pile on, the harder it is to get the rents to make sense. And we have to go to mass housing with rents that make sense for final approval. We have to show that the project is financially feasible, and that's a product of income expenses which go to cost.
Madam Chairman. You know, Mr. Murray, you've had several projects, 40Bs before this board, and every single time, I've brought in the architecture. It's part of the review for your PEL, Project Eligibility Letter. It's somewhat vague. I read the PEL review of the design. It talks about Cape Cod style, but in reality, are they really Cape Cod style? But, you know, I've asked you to consider the architecture on every single one of your 40Bs, and you never come back. What you did was you colorized a couple of the prints. So I have to really question, what are you gonna come back with after what I guess talking to you for about a year now? And you've had the opportunity to change it. You haven't changed one single plan that's come before us. So I'm not sure that going forward with this is giving you an opportunity to change the architecture. Is that really gonna happen? I mean, you haven't considered it in the past. I don't understand where you're gonna go with it now.
I don't understand what you're saying. We changed those plans completely. We made the porches separate so that we get wider porches with more of a pitch on the roof in the front. On the studio buildings, we added dormers on the top. We put glass lights in the doors. We added.
As one member, I never, again, I'm in a debate, but I never considered that adequate, but we were still under the 10%, and there was very little we could do about it. We can do everything about it now. We can deny this. We can, we can, we can recommend you do some other changes.
Yes, you can.
Why come back? Why spend the time on this now, knowing that, well, I'm gonna speak for this in the board, but there seems to be some distaste for this project from the community, and I think some on the board here. I can't speak for everybody but myself. So why should we put you through the expense of peer review right now for engineering? It doesn't solve the density on a piece of land that we don't need to accept. We don't need to accept this density. We understand, I understand, the need for affordable housing in this town, but there are a lot of other projects that are likely to come in, probably are going to come in, that will fit the bill a little bit better than this. And why should we approve something of this piece of land with this kind of density and this kind of architecture? I just don't see it. And why should you go through the expense of the PEL engineer? Pretty expensive. So why should you go through this? Why not just take this off the table and just go try and do a better job with it back in a few months, maybe? I'm just asking. I'm just asking. These aren't just, I'm just one member.
No, it's, it's, I hear what you're saying, and I, and I understand you're, you're feeling empowered at this point, because we've had these shoved down your throat for years.
I'm not feeling empowered. We are empowered.
You are empowered, and, and you've had them forced on you for years, and now you finally have a say in what's going on, and you're using it. And I respect that. We knew that was coming from our end. I just didn't expect this kind of reaction to, to those units.
Well, it's just a very dense use, all 40Bs are, but it's a very dense use of land that doesn't need to be. And I, and I get the whole part about the finances. I know how these finances work. I know the cost. You actually have some pretty good cost per square foot in your application, the Falmouth application. You've done well with that. And again, I'm just speaking as one member, and you've heard what I had to say. Heard what the community has had to say. They don't want this, and the board has to listen to the neighborhood. They don't want this. There's one person that I heard come up here tonight that said, I really want this. I understand the need for affordable housing, and I can overlook the density. I can overlook the architecture because we need this so badly. Nobody has said that. I haven't heard anybody in this board say that either. And it's just me.
I understand what you're saying, and you never will hear abbotters say that. You never will hear abbotters say that.
And rightfully so on this.
But what we, what we can do is help with the drainage issues. We can help with other things that are going on in their neighborhood, like the lousy road. You know, those are conditions that we can work with. I guess what I'm asking is, rather than deny, let me go work on some of these issues and come back. It's up to you, though.
No, it's up to the board.
Right, and I don't want, and I don't want to waste my time, and it just appease me. If you really feel that strongly about it, do what you gotta do.
The chair to decide where to go with this.
Well, we can't vote tonight.
No, I would recommend that the board continue the hearings to January 9th. That gives the applicant time to appeal if they should choose to do so. And we can certainly ask a peer engineer for some type of estimate if you opt to go forward so that you've got that for your next meeting.
I think we absolutely have to go with a peer engineer, because a lot of issues have been raised that only an engineer can answer. A number of people have testified here tonight on their own personal knowledge, but if this is challenged, and we need evidence to support a denial, we're not gonna get it here. We need some engineering backup.
Madam Chair, how will this be challenged?
Superior Court.
Through you to our zoning ministry. How will this be challenged? What are the averages of challenge that the applicant has?
They have the right to appeal to the EOHLC.
On what grounds? I mean, we have to know that in order to decide to go forward. What grounds? I mean, we, I'm currently, as one member, under the impression that we can deny this.
No.
But we can't.
No.
Well, you, you have to grant them the right to appeal, and they will have the time in the interim before our next meeting to do that.
And what are they appealing? I just wanna understand.
A potential, they, they have the right to appeal a potential denial. They would have to demonstrate to the state that we have not achieved safe harbor or some other protection that we're claiming.
Why waste this, Madam Chair, can you answer? We already have a certification. What are they gonna, what, what, how's that gonna change?
That's the rules. They have the right.
I just want the applicant to understand this.
There's two questions you're asking, and she's only answering one. You're asking, if we deny, is that appealable? Is that your question?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, if that's appealable, it's Superior Court. And the standards are whether we act arbitrarily and capriciously, and therefore, we have to have some evidence to support a denial, and right now, we have none.
No grounds?
Well, we do.
About soggy grounds.
No, no. You have to have evidence presented by somebody who knows what they're.
Yeah, well, I mean, and, you know, I mean, and.
Right now, we have the word of a lot of people. It's their personal experience. That in itself probably won't carry the day. We need a peer review.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, we obviously need engineering. It, I could be wrong, but it seems.
We're gonna require that he come up with a peer engineer's review.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that we can understand more about the engineering issues on site.
Right.
And.
What about them?
I guess I still don't understand why, what, what it is, for 10%, why should we go forward with this?
He's already waived it. So, but once he waives it, then it's treated like a regular zoning case.
I see.
Okay? And it goes forward to Superior Court or Land Court. It's his choice, and there you have to present evidence that meets the requirements of the rule of evidence, and right now, we don't have any.
Even though he would be building multiple units on a single-family?
40B still applies.
Yeah.
Should we also, do you feel, ask for traffic, since the traffic has been brought up?
Traffic, that's been, but also specifically ask for the wetlands analysis, and as Mr. Young testified, there's a drainage pipe somewhere. That should be checked out to see where it actually goes.
Well, the boards had had, what, almost 17 pages of items, so I think we need to move forward with all the peer reviews.
Well, if the applicant's willing to spend the money, I guess we go forward.
Yeah.
May I just, just in closing, the 17-page review is a lot of boilerplate in there, you know, to the border house.
Questions that have to be responded to the board, I can fully understand.
What I would like to do, before assigning a peer review, I would like to ask to continue it to January 9th, where we have time to address these, these engineering and other issues before the peer reviews, what we're doing, because they're reviewing something now that we're gonna change, or we're willing to change on the drainage and other things, so.
Can you, can you tell this board what you're gonna review and come back, so we all are on the same page?
I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna look at that drainage and see if we can deal with the drainage on the street. We're gonna address the concerns I heard about Homestead drainage issues and their septic system. We're gonna look at the grades and the elevations, and if there's anything we can do with that, we'll do it. We're gonna look at the pavement issues in the street and put them on the plan, what we're gonna do with that. And we're gonna look at the designs of the buildings and see if we can improve those.
And you're gonna talk to Amy Lowell.
And I'm gonna talk to Amy Lowell and get more detail on that, and I'm gonna get you your calculations.
I guess, Noreen, what's a peer review cost for stormwater? I mean, is this 10,000 bucks? I mean, I guess, what's your concern if it's not that much money at the end of the day?
No concern.
Better understand information that's been, Merrill here has information. I'm not, I'm not the subject area expert. I would like a peer to better understand all of these people's concerns, not just your engineer.
I'm not opposed to a peer review engineer looking at it. What I'm saying is, I'm gonna change these plans. You're gonna send out the plans I have now. Peer review engineer's gonna review them, and I'm gonna come back to you with different plans. We'd like to come back with the different plans, then we'll send them out to the peer review engineer.
A two-step process.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. Let me, give me a chance to revise them first and then send them to peer review.
I think that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I stepped on Scott. Are you done?
Yeah, well, I guess I'm more amenable to a two-step process, but again, the board's very busy. We get a lot going on, and I just don't wanna meet on January 9th and not have all the information that's necessary for us to potentially move forward again or to deny it at that point.
So to that point, are we? So to that point, are we on 180-day clock here?
No.
So this can go on until we've heard enough? We don't have, we don't care about 180 days like we had on a traditional 40B.
That's my understanding. I can verify that.
I think that's important because I don't want the clock to run out.
We don't either. But the 180 days, I understand, still pays, still works.
I'll, I'll verify that.
Now, I don't know a lot about this, but I was with the conservation agent recently on another piece of property and it was highly educational for me, but my understanding was that wetlands can also be created when they're inundated with water. And I mean, he was taking core samples and this particular instance, it wasn't a wetland today, but it had the potential of becoming a wetland years, and not a lot, I mean, just a couple of years from now. And I'm just curious as to if this piece of property has ever gone, undergone such an examination, I mean, with the cores or whatever it is they do? Because, I mean, this property and then hearing the gentleman and Mr. Al speaking, you can't go in there without, you know, coming out with mud all over your shoes. I mean, it's, I think that potential needs to be addressed as well.
Are you requesting a hydrology test?
Yeah. I, I think it's, it's warranted and if it comes up, it's fine. But I mean, if not, I just, I, I was, I know the area a little bit and I mean, the fact that the surge, definitely, I mean, it's just hearsay now, but I mean, it, I think it needs to be addressed, looked into. I mean, you know, Mark Kasparzic, you know, might be, it might be something that, you know, conservation needs to look at. You know, I mean, like I said, I, I know that these things can change and maybe it wasn't a wetland 10 years ago, but maybe it is by the time they're done.
Was there a request for applicability done? No.
We're not, we're not shown to be in any wetlands areas, but I'll get a botanist out there to take a look at it.
I'd prefer our own. If we could ask conservation if, you know...
They're going to ask us to flag it first. That's what they're going to do, so...
I don't know any of the procedures. Like I said, it was, you know, I witnessed him there and, and I know that he said that, you know, the, this particular piece of land wasn't a wetland today, but it had the potential to be one in a few short years. And I mean, who's to say that window hasn't already been...
Well, these detention points create wetlands. I mean, they, they become a wetland themselves, so...
And I mean, the, the state's already using it to drain?
Usually not this piece. They're using their own piece.
And they're all, they're all connected?
I'll get a botanist out there to flag it. It's...
Okay, let's do that.
No, not Chair.
Can't hurt.
Not Chair. We're not talking about botanists flagging wetlands vegetation. We're talking about somebody doing a hydrology test where they take core samples and they test the soils below. And that's the type of, this is not my, this is not my subject area, but I've had to do this on a lot of land. That didn't look like wetlands.
It's underneath where all the action is.
It's underneath where everything is. And so it's not just, your botanist is going to go up and identify skunk cabbage and frag mites, other things like that. And you're going to come up with maybe nothing and say, "Well, this is not a wetland." It's the hydrology of the soils that Mr. Finnegan is discussing right now that may have changed to create this as a wetland. I've gotten caught on that unfortunately all too many times on land that I didn't think was wet back in the day. So if this board is considering what everyone has said about this being wet and maybe a wetlands, I am speaking out of turn. I'm not an engineer, but maybe you do need to have more than a botanist. You have to have an engineer who, a wetlands engineer who does hydrology tests. I, I don't know. That's going to be up to you, but I think it's going to be a question that's going to remain and not go away.
I'll address that. Now, review two.
We do not have a referral on file from the Conservation Commission. And I think they ought to be notified of this discussion and ask them to go out and take a particular look at these issues and report back to us before we hire anybody.
I think that's prudent.
So they had, so there's an engineer on the...
They have a technician.
And they have the core. Well, you know that, Tony. I mean, you've done it before.
I wanted it on the record, that's all.
Yeah.
Everybody else, you good?
I just want to make sure we get the action plan, Noreen. You...
Continue to the 9th of February.
So, we can ask conservation to take a look. They would need permission to go on private property. I don't know that they're required to do testing on private property, so there, there may be some question there that I'll have to check with them on.
Then there'd be no sense for them to go out because they're not going to identify wetland vegetation, which is the primary goal.
Right. But we could also, in the interim, I realize there may be some changes made, but we could still ask a peer engineer to give us some type of estimate for work. So at the next meeting, if you decide to go forward, at least they have some idea about what we're...
Can we ask Nick if they'd be amenable to conservation core sampling this property? If, in fact, they would?
Yeah, I guess the question is...
Certainly, it's, it's a concern in lieu of what I just learned in the last month.
Yeah.
It's a definite, and what I learned tonight, it's a definite concern in my mind.
Yeah, I guess...
For four units, I, you know, let me just be honest, this thing doesn't thrill me.
Yeah, I guess the question is what conservation can or can't do on private property. And I think typically if they determine that they don't have jurisdiction, which would be the starting point, they may opt not to go out and do private sampling.
Oh, yeah, I think we should be asking them what they're, and I mean, and we also should be asking Nick if he's amenable to this, to allowing them. And I think we can answer that.
Yeah.
May I comment on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Marioni has already suggested that he would put a botanist on the site, which is fine. There are no wetlands plants necessarily there. That's what the botanist does. So maybe you need to do, have an engineer come, agree to have an engineer do hydrology tests.
All the soil scientists, Merrill has soil scientists.
Yes.
We'll have them go out there and do that and we'll have their report for...
All right.
After you assign a peer review, they can verify it or disagree with it.
Again, no offense to anyone and no distrust, but you know, trust and verify. I mean, I would, myself personally, I would prefer that our own conservation had some, at least, sort of oversight on this.
Well, then he has to make a request for determination. Am I not correct on that?
No, I think, no, I think you do.
If I may answer that. Typically, what happens is we would flag the wetlands for the Conservation Commission. They would, we would then file the determination with them to see if they agree with that wetlands line. That gives them the permission to come out on the property and check on it. We didn't see any wetlands on this property within 100 feet of where we were working. But I'll get a soil scientist out there to verify it.
With hydrology of the soils that, and wetlands could be created and you just don't have the wetlands plants there.
And it hasn't rained much this year.
Well, I think what you're talking about, those borings, is hydroic soils. Those are determined by what history is, history has said that it gets wet.
Whether you find the wetlands on the top, I mean, isn't a determiner or whatever of whether, in fact, it actually is. I was, like I said, I only really learned this recently and I was quite surprised at the process. The fact that something can become a wetland and I mean, it seems that there's a lot of indications here that it may be or may have or...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is let our engineer do his thing to address the concern. Then you have your peer review engineer confirm or deny and then we'll know. And if it's anywhere near current jurisdiction, they'll get involved. And as to the question about the 180 days, I believe it does apply, but we can ask to extend it rather than take a denial. Give you more time if you need it. So, and we did that to open the hearing. We'll be more than willing to do it to keep things moving in the right direction.
So come January 9th, when you come back, you'll have that hydrology report.
We'll have, and revised plans, revised elevations, nitrogen calculations, answers on existing drainage problems in the area, what we may be able to do and what we can't do and why. And what we, we'll do regarding the pavement.
Some spruced up elevations.
Yeah, we're going to redo, we're going to look at the elevation and do whatever we can to make them look better.
Now, just, just for my own, are they planning on putting a sewer stub just for this development and not taking in the rest of the neighborhood?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know that. Do you?
So it looks like they made an exception just for you because it was always my understanding that there would be nothing sewed north of 28. But again, I could be wrong, but...
It says in the report, this is the only property on the street sewed.
Must be nice.
And it was, no, it was there before we, before we filed. It was already in the plan long before we came up with this.
Well, what were they going to hitch to it if they're not hitching the rest of the neighborhood?
I don't know.
No sense to me.
I don't know, but they didn't do it for us.
Sure. Come back up. Come back up.
You have to get up and speak into the microphone because there's people at home on the edge of their seats that want to hear everything that you have to say.
My question is basically, would you consider...
Speak into the microphone.
Would you consider scaling down the number of units that you're building in here at all? That's my question. In other words, not maybe Motel 6 or make it more, a little housing community. Would you consider that?
I try to keep an open mind and consider everything. I'll talk to the owners about that. But again, it's a, it's a numbers game. But we'll talk to them. And naturally, we're always looking for the path of least resistance. So I'll talk to the owners and see what we can come up with.
Thank you. Anybody else out there before we...
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Come on up.
Hi, I'm Walter Burek at 45 Homestead Lane, zero at Oxford. I would like to invite one or two of the members of the board to visit me at 45 Homestead Lane and have a look at this wetland, this drainage system, the water runoff. Just have a look. Next time, at the next meeting, I will bring in some pictures, but I'd like to have one, one or two of you at least.
To invite us all.
Okay, well...
We all have to go separately too. We can't come at the same time.
Pool, pool party.
We all went out there. Yeah, oh, yeah. We all go to every property. Oh, yeah.
Is this something that would be more evident during or after a rain as opposed to obviously...
Yeah, I was just saying, I don't know. I'm at the zero line, so I, I don't know map from top to bottom. I'm an electronic technician, so I have no idea what all this is about. All I know is my property is zero line and it, it's right, right there where the drainage is. So as I say, I'd like to invite you to come down. I will bring pictures next time of what it looks like.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to continue to June 9th, not January 9th.
January 9th.
January 9th.
Second it.
We have a motion in a second. Anybody else have anything else before we vote?
Frank. Clerk.
Frank Clerk.
Frank Clerk.
Oh, Clerk!
Actually, some days...
All those in favor. I opposed on...
Clerk can't some days.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Appreciate it. We, we got a lot of information.
524.
524.
Yes, 9035.
It's so cool when you get, it's so cool when you get all these people to know what happens. That's how I was, I still know my vibes in Walpole. And while my dad was a builder, a person would come and they'd say, "I'm going to build this." I say, "Maybe you know where the cattails are at?" And they'd be like, "How do you know that, old man? I ran through all these, this whole town on my feet running away from everything."
We have in a butters list, they say, "Write a butters list."
Cool when they know types like that. Because not a lot of people know that. Amy's not going to know. You shouldn't expect her to know.
Suzanne. That, that, Tom Lewis, right there.
Yeah, we're right there.
Gavel them.
Yeah, no, we're not done. You guys, we still have to finish up. Thank you all. Sorry.
If you could talk outside the building, all of you.
Yeah. Thank you again. Minutes. Thank you.
We are tabling because our administrator's been viciously busy, but I will get them out to you.
Sorry. On zoning administrator updates?
Very quickly, we've issued a couple of administrative approvals.
Nick. Nick. Nice call, Mark.
One was for 265 Walker Street. They were revising the shape of their pool from a kidney shape to a rectangle.
Light stuff.
Yeah.
Important facts.
Looks better in the aerial photos.
247 Oyster Pond Road, they had proposed an addition to the rear or north and they were actually opting not to put that in and they were just adding a rinse station. So we clarified those plans for them. 36 Bayside Drive, they were doing a single-story addition to the rear and in the process, they were making some corrections for work that had been done that was not properly permitted. They also have some fencing in the town's road layout that they're going to remove. They had a deck that was too close to their side lot line that they are correcting. So in the process of all their corrections, we gave them permission to do their little addition. And then 27 Homer Ave, property's been before the town before. They have a small second floor deck that they wanted to screen in. We granted them permission to do that.